Thank you very much. First item of business under announcements and presentations, I do need to announce that executive sessions were held on May 28th and also immediately prior to the meeting this evening. And the agenda topics were real estate acquisition, personnel issues, and other matters involving attorney and client privilege. Okay, next, under announcements and presentations, we have Mr. Robert Nuss with us this evening. I'll invite him up on Costco construction detour plans, sir.
All right, thank you board for getting me on early in your agenda. I do want to talk about the detours that Costco is planning. And then just give you a general overview of what else is planned on the site and around the site. So the first map that's up on the screen is a hemp road detour. That we hope, and these dates are flexible, but the goal is July 7th, they're going to shut down hemp road between Carlisle Pike and Roaring Fork. The goal is to be done before August 15th, but as a drop dead, they have to be done by August 15th to get the school buses back through there. That'll be the same detour basically that was on hemp road from last year. Same detour signs, you know, you'll go down Carlisle Pike, 114 and Texaco Road back over. It will be open all the way up to Roaring Fork, so obviously the local traffic will probably use Roaring Fork as well. So any questions on the hemp road detour? We're doing that, obviously, we're reconstructing hemp road in front of the Costco there, raise the profile a little bit and get ready for additional turn lanes and traffic. Next slide, if you can go to the second page of that one, there should be, yep. So Lexus Lane, small little detour, but we're going to be working at the front of Lexus Lane where it connects to Carlisle Pike. That concrete island in the middle there is going to get a little bit bigger, just to make sure no one can ever make a left out of there. So to do that, we're going to detour Lexus Lane after we detour hemp roads, they will not be going concurrently. Again, if the timing works out, it'll be end of August, really shouldn't impact school traffic any. Detour is very short, obviously using hemp road and Roaring Fork. So those are the two detours that we present to the board and need approval on to keep moving forward with that. Township staff and Penn Dot both have okay detour routes and detour signings, so we should be good to go there. So any questions on the detours?
Well, it pertains at Lexus Lane, when you come out, that's a dedicated right in, right out. If I looked at the plans correctly, there's going to be a concrete median on the pike to prevent people from jutting across there after.
There's not. So the island is there now, it's just going to get a lot bigger, almost like the one down at the Porsche dealer.
Yeah, has that.
Has that, yeah, so that's what you're talking, yes, that's what we're doing.
But not all, not physically on the pike, because I could see people trying to.
Not physically on the pike, like we're doing, say, like you did down at ABC or whatever, not that much, but just a bigger island. But yeah, that's why we're detouring, so we can build that.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
All right, if you want, if don't, yes.
Well, I was going to say, when that construction is going on to prevent that, could you maybe have something temporary, either barrels or something? Sort of channelizing to keep people from using Lexus and going out and turning left to go when the closure is going on. That's where I was getting at.
So when the closure is going on, there won't be any traffic on Lexus, if that's, I'm not.
When you do hemp, the one.
Oh, when you, no, I see what you're saying.
They're going to go around that and try to go out there.
Let me mark that down.
Yeah, just temporary, something to prevent people from utilizing, I'd rather them go out to a signalized light than make a left.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
If you want, so the Costco is doing some other off-site improvements, if you want a two-minute quick summary of that, so if we go to 114 and. Well, Texaco, we can go there first. So Texaco Road, again, those plans have been approved through the township, we're waiting on Penn Dot's permit right now. Most likely that starts end of August timeframe, and what we're doing there is we're lengthening that left turn lane, so more people can turn on the Texaco Road. To do that, we're going to shift towards the west, we have all the propingers, we've talked to them, redoing some of their driveways. And again, that should mostly be nighttime or daytime work, but not detour, probably single lane flagging conditions. And again, it shouldn't take that long to build, but that's what we're doing at Texaco Road. Any questions on that?
It's the timing on that.
What was that?
The timing.
Timing should probably be end of August, maybe mid-August, so it will overlap with school, but again, it's going to be. We don't really know the restrictions yet that Penn Dot is going to put on it, but it could be a, you know, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM type shift that they have to work because of the volume on 114.
So Rob.
Yes.
So the board knows, we did ask not to start that though until the hemp road was reopened. Because we were not wanting to have a congestion at Texaco that could affect the hemp usage. So if we finish, yeah, if we finish, let's call it the 15th of August, then it would make sense then to head over to Texaco, but not to start Texaco earlier. Because of the already the excessive traffic.
The other question I have down, the improvements that you're going to make at 11 North, it's left turn. When you get to that, I have comments.
All right, we'll go to that next.
Okay.
Good segue. So that's what you're looking at there, this map, and we highlighted in yellow, because we're not doing a lot of this intersection. But basically, as you're heading east on the Carlisle Pike, that we'll call it the second or the left left lane, is a lot shorter than the other one. Basically, we're going to extend that back to the median, make that the same length, get a little bit more stacking in there, and hopefully get people out of the way of the thru vehicles. Not much more you can do to that signal.
Okay, now, and actually, I'll have a comment on. Lexus Lane, when that's improved, are they going to take into consideration, and I know they probably will try to dissuade trucks from using it, but if a truck gets out there, are they going to try to make that radius on the curb when you're coming out enough that it can accommodate off-tracking for trucks?
Yes, we actually ended up having to get some right away from the Lexus dealership there, going to stripe that out, and a truck can, will be accommodated.
Okay, and you invent too, that there's something that happens on Roaring Fork.
Correct, yes, the trucks will get out there, we're going to move that one fire hydrant a little bit, but that's all being done, yes.
Okay, then the other question I have, 11 North to 114 West, which would be the left turn. When, I understand we're going to get more room to queue and stack cars with that extra lane that you're going to extend. My other question would be, when you come down to the turning point, where you're turning onto 114 West. That is a, that's a tight intersection for a truck, even if they're in the right lane. And the same with people that are in the dedicated left lane, trying to go into the left lane of 114 West. Can we do anything there to maybe get a little bit more of a turning assistance in the truck turning template for them in the right lane? And also to help the left lane a little bit, I know that that's kind of a choke point there, but if they can maybe either change the island for the be the northwest corner, either shorten it up or and or do something there to maybe try to move curb there to help in the center median to give more area there, because it is tight with trucks, they struggle.
Yeah, we'll look, so we already had that permit, so it's going to be harder to go back and try to make changes like that, but we can, we can talk to Penn Dot.
Okay. So Dave, I'm just thinking the same place you are, one of the challenges, Rob, and it's not, you're trying to make the best of that, is people actually can do a U-turn there. So you have two left turn lanes, and when people start to do U-turns there to go to Sheetz's or wherever, it can somewhat start to create a bit of a traffic jam.
This is more on 114 West, the center median there, and then between that and the, it would be for the mast arm for, I believe, 11 South, the pole. There's the median there for the merge lane to go on 114. It's tight for trucks turning left there, and we're going to have more and more trucks utilizing that. And then they're pinching over when they off-track turning into the other lane. I was seeing if we could do a little bit there to maybe alleviate that, to give them more room to swing to the right, their passenger side when they turn. And or help the cars a little bit with their turning.
All right, we can look at that. Truly, that's the two offsites that Costco is going to be doing, again, hopefully all this wraps up sometime September. Any other questions?
Don't see any, yep.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, I'll invite Ray up for some status updates.
This is the financials now through May of this year. One thing we have found recently is that the, what I would call the real estate permits or permits in general. While we are trending very big or very well because of the commercial, they seem to have softened tremendously. Actually, we're going to probably see one of the lower months that we've seen in a long time from what I call our regular base permits. So we're still in a good place, but we've noticed that they've, they have slowed up tremendously from the months of April and May. So just want to share that with you, but overall, the team is in a good place as we are five months through the year, 42% of the year. Go ahead. We talked about this last time, this is not meant to be a busy page, it's just meant to, these are the projects that we have going, and it's a lot. I did mention it last time, I'll mention it again, the, what we call the CV Tunnel Underpass will be in the year 2027 now, not 2026. So there's a lot of planning going on, and there'll be more discussion later this year and into the spring of next year for the design and the construction for '27. Go ahead. We have these grants in play. All of us know right now, the budget is in what I would call an undetermined amount or an undetermined time. There's significant discussion on the, on the budget with, at the state level, obviously, these grants are driven by where the state is. So we're in play, we know we're still in play, we just have to figure out what's going to happen with the budget. I'm sorry, yeah, thanks Scott. This is the stormwater that we've talked about, you're going to see changes in January of 2026. Our ordinances are going to be updated, and we are also going to provide our residents over the next six months the calculation of how stormwater will be viewed in our residential, in our residential developments. And what we're wanting to do is get out ahead of it, so everybody is well aware that they will be, they will be calculated much differently in 2026, based on the new permit. Just a friendly reminder on stormwater, impervious area, ensuring that if you have a project, please account for the impervious area. Each respective property has a maximum amount there allowed, and based on whatever project you do, that'll determine whether it's a minor or a major stormwater permit. So any questions whatsoever, please reach out to Jennifer Grawler, she is our MS4 Coordinator, she can answer any question with regards to stormwater. Go ahead. We already talked about the restrictions tonight, I had this on here from last time, but thank you again, Rob, for doing that. Click the next one. All right, so this is, I just want to share with you, you're going to see some really cool pictures. These are from my car, and then about two hours ago, I received drone pictures of Costco. So I feel like these are okay pictures, if you keep going, Scott. It's the gas area within the Costco, keep going, and there we are. This was taken this afternoon around 2:30, I have three pictures that a drone was taking, how much progress they've made since, I'll call it, early May to right now. As we speak, their goal is still fall of this year of 2025, they have not wavered from that, so that is still their goal, is that that, that'll be an operating business in the fall of 2025. Thanks Scott. Township is going to have a new website, it'll be, it'll go live on July 21st. Start to look on Facebook and other, and our current website with some more details, but we just want to share that with everybody. It'll be a more interactive website, it'll be user-friendly, much more user-friendly. We recognize, we don't want people to click seven times to find something, it should really be a much more user-friendly platform. And so we're very excited about introducing our new website on July 21st. Keep going, it doesn't do it, it's just it, but thank you. Big announcement, just want to share with everyone here, on July 31st, Silver Spring Township is having a celebration of preserving 1,000 acres of land. This is an invitation that we have here, we are real excited to have this celebration. We have invited a number of people throughout the entire state, county, and all those people that have been part of this really incredible endeavor that the Land Preservation Board has really done. And, you know, I just want to thank everybody that's on that board. There'll be a lot of people there from the high level at the state level, and many other people that have been a big part of it, including obviously the people that have donated their land in the program. So if anybody is interested in coming, we have an official invitation, please reach out to Laura Brown, just let her know. You don't have to do that, but if you do that, we just want to account, they're going to have some cake and water and some basic things for people to make sure we have enough. We right now are anticipating around 100 to 125 people in attendance. It will be at Stony Ridge Park, down at Bernheisel Bridge, so we'll have a tent, and we'll also have our pavilion and other things available. We are very, very excited about the celebration on July 31st, I just wanted to make that announcement for everyone, thanks. And the, and the program, was anybody here at Chill at the Mill? Willata, anybody else? No? Yes? It was, I knew, I knew some board members were, I just, please come out, it was an amazing, amazing concert we had over at Houston Mill. A lot of people, food, beverages, it was just a really, really good time. We're going to have another one here coming up in the fall, August 15th, called Music at the Mill. So please come out, enjoy it, it's free, just show up, get a lawn chair, and then enjoy the music. Go ahead, I think that should be, yeah, that should be it. That's up, the update, we're in a good place though financially through the first five months.
Thanks Ray.
Yep.
We're going to move to public comment, if there is any, please come up to the mic. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I listened with great interest on the updates on the, the traffic projects going on in the township this evening. Which is always a good thing, when you think about dangerous roads in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, a lot of people will think about the Skookled and Vine Street expressways in Philadelphia, Parkway East and West in Pittsburgh. But there's a couple of other roads closer to home that are certainly up there with all four of those roads. And I'm talking specifically about State Road from its start on Trindle up to its terminus at Texaco. And I'm also talking about Texaco Road from Locust Point, all the way out to 114. I realize that we are talking about Penn Dot roads, God bless Tyler Fairchild, he's already heard this rant, he has an idea of where I'm going with this. I understand that we are talking about Penn Dot roads, but one of the things that I was struck by were updates that are going to be happening along the Carlisle Pike and other Penn Dot road for the Costco project. I'm curious about how long, and this is rhetorical, I'm curious about how long those projects, how long it's been since those projects were presented to Penn Dot. When I've heard numbers of 2020, 2036, 2037, for State Road to be improved. Let me share with you some personal experience, and this just happened two days ago on State Road. We have been run nearly, my wife and I have nearly been run off of State Road 14 times and counting this year. Three of them in one day that happened on Monday. One each at all three of the hairpin curves. Where the drivers just came barreling around in these 52-foot trailers that that road is not equipped to handle. They came barreling around the curves, the first one forced us off the road, the second one, we stopped probably a good 75 feet back from the intersection, and then he still almost hit us. And the third one at Eichelberger's Curve was a 52-foot tanker truck. I realize this is Penn Dot, I realize these roads are beyond the township control. But you all are our elected representatives, you have contacts at Penn Dot. Please use them. My plan is to take a page from the letter that was presented to you all last month and give you something in writing concerning citizen, and I think most of the residents of Con Haas Estates and a number of folks over at TOA share this. Con Haas Estates, the only way you're going to get out is on State Road. Period, end of story, and you take your life in your hands. And Ray, I want to just make a comment to you, I really appreciate your enthusiasm as township manager. That's exactly the type of enthusiasm I want to see with a township manager. But I will tell you, Costco is a double-edged sword for a lot of us, Costco and the warehouses down on Hemp Farms. Costco, good from the standpoint of the additional shopping and opportunities in that regard. But for traffic, I am sorry, no one is excited about Costco. And I'm sorry, Mr., I see Mr. Nuss back there smiling, okay? It may seem funny, sir, but it's not funny to the rest of us that live there, I understand that. So I just wanted to go ahead and bring that up, put this on the record, that this is a big concern for a lot of us. My fear is that for one of these meetings, you're going to be coming in, and there will have been an obituary in the paper, or several obituaries in the paper, of people that didn't survive an encounter with these 52-foot behemoths. I pray to God that doesn't happen, but I guess inevitably it's going to have to, if Penn Dot requires a body count to do something, I guess that's when I have to, what's going to have to happen. Thank you very much for listening, I really appreciate your time.
Don, I brought up a couple of years ago when the Costco project was talked about, we've already approached the state. I think ultimately, I'll be honest with you, especially in this economy, we're probably going to have to fund either part or a good portion of that, but it's on our radar at Texaco at the S-turn. Myself, Aaron, I believe Tyler might have been in that meeting with the farmer there that I happen to know, we, he's willing to work with us to alleviate that S-turn, it's going to be a detriment to him, there's things already going on, but if the state, if, I think if the financial climate was better, it would happen sooner, but I think ultimately, if we want to have that happen, we're probably going to have to use township funds to fund a lot of it. There has been, the one gentleman I know, that he either lives on Briar Gate or Cromwell. He actually had the hood of his truck run over by a semi, he actually drove up over it, I think it was like six months ago.
Yeah.
There, I think it was a gross drive, so it's happened, I don't fault them, it's just the turning radius, they're off-track there for those. That road was never designed, that was a rural road that has become more and more traveled, because the borough has put turning restrictions on their intersections, and it mechanicsburg, and it has forced more and more trucks outside town, so, no, I agree with you 100%.
All right, I wanted to go with it on the record, so thank you.
Thanks Don.
Don.
Harry, go ahead.
Don, Don, here, Don. Well, in front, in front.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, Don, people just ignore me anyhow.
Tyler, Aaron, and Ray, I've worked with them in the past for State Road. I've written letters to Representative Rothman when he was representing, he's Senator now. I had conversations with him. There, the only thing that I got out of that was the markers on the road, and that still doesn't do that much, because they still drive like Williams Grove Speedway. So I understand where you're coming from, because it's hard to see, and one of the things that I was always told is you can't see that hill there, it's difficult. And, and Penn Dot, I think, came out and looked at it and said, everything's fine. I know people coming out of TOA were almost hit more than once, so I, you know, we, we have that, that problem too. So State Road is a bad road, if I didn't live there, I wouldn't travel on it, it's really bad. And I know with Costco's coming in, we're going to get all that traffic from Mechanicsburg, we're going to get it from Hampton Township, we're going to get it from Carlisle, all over the place. It's going to be really, really bad.
Even, Harry, if there were a ban on the 52-foot trailers, I know you can't ban trucks on State, because that forces them on the Locust Point and then the Texaco, or on the 114 in Mechanicsburg, but for all three of those roads, the 52-footers can be banned. If Penn Dot had the will, and if the Mechanicsburg and Silver Spring Township municipal bodies banded together to try to do something. I think that's something that could be reasonably done. And I, and I appreciate the position that all of you are in, I sincerely do, I'm not going to stand up here and beat my fist and say, you know, this is all your fault and everything, it's not. One thing that you all can do, when you are presented with opportunities for rezoning, take a look at the physical infrastructure around that area that would be supporting development, that's, for the area that's asking to be rezoned. If the infrastructure doesn't support it, I don't see how you can reasonably approve a zoning change. Okay, that's, that's what you can control, so.
That's one of the things I voted against Costco's, you know, but, because I knew the traffic was really going to be bad on that road, and I knew that. And I can almost see that, you know, hopefully there's not real bad accidents and stuff, and I know all the trucks coming over from Mechanicsburg and stuff, and you're saying, get with Mechanicsburg and everything. And I think Dave and Theresa got with Mechanicsburg to do something about Church Road, and Mechanicsburg.
We offered that, we had a meeting with them, and it was the previous manager, we offered to help pay, we offered our force to come in to help keep costs down. And, you know, ultimately, they said about the agreement in place, which came about because they annexed ground off the township years ago. So they benefited from it, and I told them, we had no problem taking the road over if you give back, because it's all warehouse and income and commercial. I said, you know, give us that back and we'll take the road back. So, I mean, it's ridiculous sometimes trying to deal with people, they're short-sighted. I will say though, long-term, that I think the problem we run into, you know, you brought up a rezone, since I've been on the board, where we've done a flat-out rezone from Ag, has only been maybe once or twice, and that was mainly the Stone Quarries. We, we inherited a mess, and I think in the 70s and 80s, it's nothing against anybody that was on the board at that point, and the early 90s. Nobody thought, what's going to happen at that time, and you lived around here, it was an agricultural area.
Yep.
And it was a little bit more, a little bit more, but then as people started selling after things have hit capacity, now we're stuck with the headache and the hassles, and I can remember State Road, Nancy will remember this, it was a lane and a half wide, when we used to go up to my grandparents in the 70s there. That was a lane and a half rough road, it was not what you have now for road surface.
Right.
Things have progressed a lot, and we inherited a mess, I mean, and we can't undo the zoning that was there, I mean, we just have to make the best what we can with what, you know, when they come in, and we try to negotiate or try to ask for more, and we have, they have no obligation, once the zoning's in place.
So, and I, and I agree with everything you said, but I think, I think where your opportunity comes in is before it's even considered for rezoning. Just take a look to see if the infrastructure around it will support it.
No, I agree, no, I agree with you on that, if we do any rezone, I think you're 100% right on that.
All right, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I do have a comment for Tyler, on State Road there, I know you put those markers down on the road surface and stuff. And, and it looks like whenever they plowed the road or something, now they're all messed up, kind of, so I don't know what we can do about it, but look at the markers again, if you can, do something. Okay, that, that would be great, because like I said. Okay, that, that would be great because like I said, they don't listen to it anyhow, but at least there would be something there that, you know, might stop someone from speeding. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Clarence?
Clarence Boucher, 15 Wharf Circle in Southfield Crossing. Coincidentally, my officer, my comments also start with the township manager's status updates. The dashboards, I think, are useful with finances, land use, events, things like that. But I do have a suggestion for another item to, to track. We don't need to do it very often, but maybe occasionally quarterly or whatever. And that might be what the township is doing as far as legal actions, both being sued and suing. I realize a lot of that is under right to know, but there are a lot of public information from the docket, for instance, that we could be tracking. Again, as part of the dashboard, something that we would probably need to know as residents. And the reason I'm bringing this up is actually a specific reason because there's a second request I have. And I noticed that on the magistrate's docket in May, the Silver Spring Township's involvement in that was increased a lot. And I was just curious what happened, if there is all of a sudden a lot of scuff laws out there or change in policy, change in procedures or what might have happened. So again, two, two points, I guess I'll stand up here while we get the answers. But can we add at least quarterly, maybe a legal tracking to the dashboard? And what's going on with the magistrate?
Yeah, I think it was related to septic sewer.
It's significant amount of septic delinquent accounts. So there's a point where we're required to give them a notice and then if they don't comply with that notice, we have to take that to the local magistrate.
Clarence on?
So we're just, if I could, Dave, I'm sorry. So we're required by DEP to have those, they're to be pumped every three years. If they don't get pumped, then we go through the process of notifying them, tracking, asking them, begging them. And then we have to go to the legal action and we have then representation to, to do our best to get the, to get them pumped. We don't want to do it. We don't want the fines. We want the, we want them pumped. But we have to take that remedy unfortunately to get that.
But did they all come do it once or was there a change in policy where we're now going after them?
There's been a number of them that did come do.
And there'll be more here coming up and it'll probably be tied in with the sewer authority because we did the sewer extension out by Wartsville. And there's some people out there that just defiantly didn't hook up. So now the, and it isn't a matter, if you have financial hardship, there's programs the county helps where they front the money and work with the people. There's people that are flat out defiant out there that aren't going to hook one for whatever reason. And so that entails the sewer authority to petition the township to make them the agent to carry out. And her authority solicitors in the process right now. They're going after some of them hoping that as we, we go after the ones that are just flat out defiant that haven't done anything, that, that gets people to maybe start to comply. But you'll probably see maybe a little bit more of a spike with that potentially. If, you know, there's like 12 of them back there that have just, they, they've just snubbed their nose at the township and the authority.
And the dashboard adding legal actions quarterly or whatever?
Yeah, I think every, every legal action we'd have to understand whether it would be public knowledge or not public knowledge.
Well, I mean, everything in the docket is public knowledge. And I pulled all those off of the magistrate's docket.
I misinterpreted your question. I thought you were asking the township's legal.
Well.
I'll just jump in. If their filings on a docket, those, those could be supported on the, on the website without, without question.
Okay. But so can we get it reported? I guess what I'm asking? Both, as I said, those that the township initiated and those being initiated against the township.
We can, we can publish whatever's on the docket.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Clarence. Just as a follow up question on the, it's related to sewer. Did we start that process up there yet for the sewer connections?
Yeah, it's been in the last.
I just saw in the newsletter, the paving was quoted as indefinitely delayed. So that was a bit of a concerning word.
Yeah. So I think in speaking with the sewer authority and the current kind of what I would call open, open cases going on, it was best to defer that until 2026. We didn't want to say this year, and indefinite maybe wasn't the right word, but we also wanted to make sure, are we, are we going to be good for 26?
Okay.
Not sure how legal, I think we're going to be okay, but.
Yeah, the solicitor's going after, I think he said last meeting, they're, they're, it's shortly here. So it'll, it should buy us till like next year. I think you'll have connections either willingly or unwillingly. The authority will have it done through a contractor and liens will be placed on the property. But we did not, in, in the event that somebody that had their property stake for their connection point is not correct, you know, because they didn't take it seriously. If we had to cut the road, move that connection point, then the road's cut.
I get it.
Or if they're offloading equipment, you know, they're defacing the wearing service. We decided, or I was one of them that said, we need to postpone it till we get this done correctly. And then that also buys us time if there's any settlement points or failure.
Which there is. So I wonder if maybe we at least this year address that with the contractor.
Yeah, Ray, talk to Jim. The, we'll have, the sewer authority will have a contractor out to fix any failures.
Maybe at least in the meantime, we can resolve. There's, there's quite a few spots. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Ma'am, come on up.
Mr. Schultz, I just want to apologize to you for my actions from the last meeting, okay? Last month.
Okay. Thank you. Please.
Oops.
You're broken.
I just have a question for the board. As I was, oh, Pam Long, 21 Keystone Drive. As I was driving down the Pike and I saw the Costco, the structure for the gas tanks, I wanted to know if there was any consideration by the board or any request to Costco to put trees along the roadway in that green space to buffer Carlisle Pike to those gas tanks. Now, it's my understanding that I know different projects, they're required to put certain vegetation and, and you guys might not necessarily direct where that vegetation should go. However, you did do a text amendment to allow those, those gas pumps to be there. So I thought the least Costco could do, or you could ask for them to line it with trees and it would match across the street. Across the street at Cumberland Valley, they have their property lined with trees. So did you guys give any consideration to that? Is that something you can still do?
Do you know the, the plan offhand, Aaron, or?
Yeah, I'm loading it right now. It's taking a minute connecting to our servers, but I'll, I'll look.
Scott, you might know the requirement offhand, just ordinance generally?
Our line.
Yeah, but Harley Davidson, they have trees in front of theirs. But some of those car dealers, I know Sun Motors doesn't have any, but some of the other car dealerships, Bobby Ray Hall, you know, some of them have trees along there.
Let, let us look. Point, point taken. Yeah. Yeah. Let's check into it. Yeah.
So I, I just, I just looked at the land development plan. The landscaping plan does have a row of trees, a pretty good row of trees along the Pike in between the gas station and the Pike itself.
It doesn't, does it list the type?
Yes, but you don't want to hear me read Latin on, in a public meeting. So there, there's a, it's not just all arbivida though, I can tell you that. It's a good mix.
Where did, maybe we, is that posted or maybe we can at least get Pam a copy?
It's part of, it's part of the approved plan. So yeah, I mean, it's.
Maybe we can just snap a shot of that page if that's helpful. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comment here in person? We'll look for online. Mr. Lake?
I have one that I hope is an accurate correction. But to my understanding, the pump interval on the septic tanks is a five year interval, not three, as the township manager indicated.
My apologies. Yeah, it's five. Thanks, John.
And also, this has been a recurrent plea from a number of residents. But I'm gonna again, request that all board and committee meetings be recorded and that audio be available the day after the meeting. Especially those boards for which the minutes is taken by a resident rather than a member of staff. I don't, I, you know, we were talking about the new website and all that. I don't think that's a big ask. Thank you.
John, can I ask you a question? Are you talking all the committees, like even like New Kingstown Vision, Conservation Preservation?
Yes.
See, we don't do audio at Conservation Preservation and I'm not sure they do at New Kingstown Vision.
No.
So we wouldn't have audio for you on those.
Facilitate it going forward.
We have to, yeah, we'll have to, we do have a staff member. It's both of those. Ray, is that possible?
Well, we have to go and take a look at some technology.
I think we beat this to death. The board, the board didn't, didn't take that direction. I, I don't know what else to say. John, we, we, we looked at it, I think, two or three months in a row, but we'll consider it again.
Well, Dave raises land preservation. What staff member is present?
None.
There is no staff member associated with the land preservation board.
Conservation maybe.
Yeah, John, Conservation Preservation is a different group. It handles things outside the land preservation. The land preservation, I can't answer for.
Yeah, that, John, there's no staff member present for the land preservation board. Carl is the liaison. I am the land preservation program coordinator, so I attend those meetings. And then there are the seven volunteer members of the land preservation board that are there and of course, members of the public.
Again, in the interest of transparency, which was a big argument during the primary, facilitate audio of those meetings so that interested citizens can at least monitor what's going on. Not a big ask.
I would just like to mention that they are open to the public. You are welcome to come to any of our meetings and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I know that you submitted quite a few right to know requests recently about the land preservation program. Much of those right to know requests could be answered by attending the meetings rather than going through our records officer to get that information. We can also answer a lot of your questions at the meetings. So I would encourage.
None. None of those could have been answered by attending a current meeting. None.
Well, since you haven't been at a meeting, I'm not really sure how you could say that.
None.
Never attended a meeting.
None. I have followed the minutes and I have spoken with current and former members and there's a great deal of discrepancy between what's reported in the minutes and what was actually said.
I have no idea. That, that does not make sense to me, John.
Okay, John, we, we got your comments. Anything else? Yeah, come on up.
Frank Elwood Hope, I live in Carmel. I happen to be the chairperson of the Land Preservation Committee. And I can't think of anything that's more offensive than what Mr. Lake just said. What kind of top secret things are we talking about that haven't been recorded? And how would you know if you're not there? Pretty quiet. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Got anybody else online?
See, there we go. Just so we can see, so this is a Costco site plan that is on the township one's website under current plans. So what we are talking about is not all of these. It's not going to be a row of trees like screening that most people are used to. There are going to be breaks and it is highly set back off the right away. So there is going to be landscaping and trees, but it's not going to be a screened buffer, which is what, if you come to a lot of these meetings, is what we talk about. So just wanted everybody to see this.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Pam, thanks again for bringing that up. Okay. We'll move on then to consent agenda. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Well, I have a quick one. Just for informational purposes, six, we can vote on 6B, but I wanted to ask Darren and a couple of things on that. That's the Willimil Rain Garden. Afterwards, we can do a brief discussion. Not, we can vote on it. It's just I want to talk to them.
And then Aaron, I had just circled 4D. That was the Nolan Tesla release. I think you shared with me that the sidewalks there are not in our purview as related to that.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So for the public's knowledge, Carl alerted me that there may be some sidewalk issues out there. It, I forget where it is, whether it's state law, case law, but somewhere it says that municipalities are not allowed to require financial security for improvements that PennDOT already has financial security for. We can't essentially require a developer to pay twice for the same thing.
And they very likely already released that.
I would guess. I can't be a hundred percent certain.
Okay. Maybe we can just follow up on that.
Yeah, I can research it though.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? I'll look for a motion on consent.
Motion approved.
They moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any, that motion carries unfinished business and.
One day, Darren. Yeah. So back to the Willimil.
Sure.
What, what's the plan because of, like I seen you have that gate valve or whatever.
Yeah.
How's that going to relieve? Would, wouldn't it be better? I guess the comment I would have is I know that the water table's high down there, just from my past employment.
Right.
At the park. Outside that gate valve, what can we do to maybe facilitate drain bed or?
Yeah. The only, the only other thing I can imagine that the Conservation District or DEP would allow there would be maybe an underdrain. So yeah, like you're thinking a drain bed. The underdrain, either way, I think it would make sense to have it valved though, because since it's supposed to be a rain garden, it is supposed to hold water for a certain amount of time. Right now it's holding it for way too long. So you would want to keep the valve closed most of the time until it just sits forever. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, that entails us mechanic or manually doing that.
Unfortunately, yeah.
In the future, like, and I had concerns when we did that, that site. I think when we get into projects where we're that close to the creek or any run or tributary, we need to think twice about putting the.
Sure.
Facility that close because of the, the water table.
Understood. Yeah.
That's all I had.
Okay. All right. We'll move to unfinished business and hopefully for the last time this year, Resolution 202513. This is establishing rules and guidelines for towing system. I believe we have an updated resolution. This is establishing rules and guidelines for towing system. Um, I believe we have an updated resolution and then a second resolution that does lay out some, uh, I'll let you brief, I'll let you brief on it, Sean, I don't want to steal your thunder.
That, that's okay. So yeah, um, I'm not going to say hopeful that, that it's the last one, but I know we've been working at this, uh, for a while. Um, so what you have on your agenda tonight, uh, in Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen is the resolution draft that you, you took a look back, look at back in April. Um, that then, that was then provided, uh, to the, to the towing companies. Um, so this is the opportunity for, and I, I described it in detail that, that evening. I'm not going to be labor that, uh, again. Uh, but you have an opportunity to, to move forward on that after you provide an opportunity for any additional comment that anyone might want to make. In addition to, to that, um, there was a re- a request from the, the board under what is, uh, section six L of, of Resolution twenty twenty-five thirteen that allows you to establish, uh, fees, uh, for those companies that are uh, participating in the, in the ro- rotation program. Uh, what I've provided to you this evening and was just sent out to the, the towing companies, um, late this afternoon is a potential draft of, of, of that, uh, that fee cap, uh, that I'll, I'll call it that. Um, that would be Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. You do not need to take, take up Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty tonight on the fee cap. Uh, but I wanted to queue that up because really within the next couple of months, um, you should, you should decide whether you want to proceed with the fee cap. Or whether you want to see how the rotation itself under Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen plays out over a period of time before you would, you would institute that. In, in developing the, the fee cap, uh, we, the, the chief gathered, um, the, the fees from, from the, the qualifying towing companies. And, and what I did was took those fees, averaged them, although for the, the main part of that fee, and this only applies to light duty vehicles, I, I should, should explain. Uh, the main part of that fee, there wasn't a lot of spread in, in the fees among the, the companies. There were a couple outliers, but not by, by much. Um, so the average wound up being, you know, pretty tight within, within that, that spread. It addresses, they, some of them have administrative fees, uh, they have, uh, gates, gate fees and they have cleanup fees. So the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty would set a cap on, on all of, all of those fees. So any company that wants to participate in that rotation, uh, would not be able to exceed those, those set fees. Um, so for instance, under that, that new, new resolution, the, um, the towing fee itself that would include any administrative fee would be no more than four hundred, four hundred dollars. Um, companies can choose to charge less than that, um, but they'd be capped at that rate if they choose to participate in the, in the rotation. There are any, that's a relatively short resolution. Um, I know you were just giving to, go ahead, go ahead, uh, Mr. Lecker.
Yeah, um, one, one thing that was brought up by the towing companies in the past was if they have to wrap a car, which I do agree. If that, that should be an add-on. Can we add that to D where, um, item D that, that includes wrapping of cars and have fee and then I, to add to item D and F that photo documentation is required. If they, they're required to do cleanup of the scene. They need to take a picture of the area. That way we can make sure if they send us or they hit somebody for three hours and there's five minutes of, of work there, like I would like to see photo. Them be required to have photos that they hang on to, at least, you know, for a set period of time to document what they're doing. If winching, whatever, that they're, they have that in case somebody comes to the chief says, you know, I got that bill, the car, you know, wasn't down over a hill or whatever, then they can say, well, right here is the reason why. That it helps the chief mediate or and or Ray or whoever the situation.
Sure, as, as evidence of the, the basis for that fee, that, that makes sense.
Document it, yep.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay, we could, um, we could pass the rules and guidelines resolution and then an updated fee resolution perhaps in July.
That, that's correct. And again, that, that, that rules and regulations, uh, twenty twenty-five dash thirteen is unchanged over the last, the last couple.
Just an idea, if the board would like to move that direction.
Yeah, that, yeah, my comments were strictly with twenty twenty-five twenty.
Uh, yeah, understood.
Okay. Is there a motion then on twenty twenty-five thirteen?
Well, I had questions on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, one of the things that one of the companies had brought up before, uh, the ch- chief, I have a question and or Dave. What, have we kept things pretty equal each month as far as the number of vehicles, not toes, the number of vehicles towed? Cause if somebody gets a four or five car accident and everybody else gets one, like, are, are we documenting the number of vehicles per accident that are being towed?
Accessed, the chart shows the date, the time and the case number. Every accident has a case assigned to it. I can pull and tell you what was done, but one of the charts, no, I don't make that go in, throw that in as well. Because in our meetings, that's what we discuss, that it's per time. One time you might get two cars, next time you might get one car. Next time you might get two again, but. Since we started the trial rotation back in May third, through June twenty-third, which was the last time we had an accident requiring a tow that we called, um, everybody on our list had gotten, uh, one, two, three, four times. So if each one had gotten four, we've had sixteen in, in near two months.
Yeah, I'll use like Jake for an example, just H and J, because I know he won't get upset because it's just strictly, say, he gets there's, there's a four car wreck, five car wreck. He has a capability or maybe C and H, because I know they have trucks. What happens if, say, Miller and Sam being a single tow truck operator, they're in line for a five car wreck? How do we handle that? Do they go and then we hit the next person to get the other remaining cars?
We discussed that one of the two meetings was if Sam's next on the, on the list, it's his turn and it's a five car wreck. He would be called, counted with telling. They're saying it's five cars and if he would reply, I can only help you with two. That's what we can't have and what we discussed is, and Sam would, I know he would, he'd come, he'd load one up, he'd rush it back, he'd come back and he would keep working. That, that is what Sam does, but now we're tying up that intersection or that roadway for five trips. And I also know that Sam would say, look, best I can do for you is two or three or whatever he says, then whoever is next would be told, hey, there's two left, there's three left. Does that lead to a discussion of how do we try to decide who gets what car and trying to keep people from cherry picking? I hope exactly we don't get in that spot and we're going to cross that route to get there. I can't try to, to come up with everything. If one's a high rated sports car and one's a, a clunker, I.
Yeah, and, and, and that I agree, it's luck of the draw. And if you're the first one there, then maybe, you know, whoever's the first priority.
If, if Sam was first, if it was his turn initially and somebody, whoever was next happened to get there right before him. I'd do the best I can. I don't see any of them getting there that far apart from each other.
All right, um, I'd like to see a total number, maybe by like the end of the next month, using the trial period to see how equal it is. If, yeah, I, I, I know it's asking you guys to do another thing and like I said, like, this was all brought on because of, you know, my opinion gouging, but, um, to just to see how equal it is, if not, I, maybe we ought to look at maybe, hey, if there's a four car wreck, we've got four guys on the list. We call each of them, say, get out here. Yeah, you know, they're, they're all supposed to be there within, you, you have approximately twenty minutes. So it didn't like, we're going to expect, you know, somebody to be forty-five minutes. And unless somebody's unable to respond, then, you know, each one gets the next one and then it, that, I think if it's, it shows things are out of kilt, we try to make it fair and equitable. It's the whole purpose of this. You know, I, I think we have to by law.
I think five, that and each one only had four homes, so I think the numbers are above anyway. I'll get them for you next month. Something is way off. We can try to figure it out, otherwise I think.
Yeah, I, okay, I agree.
Also, also. Not for every major crash, but we have to go back to the scene and look at vehicles after they're towed. We have that different agency. Sam, dealers and look at different cars. Uh, just find if there's a way to give us the leeway. If it seems like a crash, that's going to need substantial investigation. Part of one place rather than different place.
And I know that if, if it's something major, I guess what, Sam's the only one that has a dedicated impound. So that, you know, that we can keep it inside in the event there's like a criminal, like an issue. I know that you have the, the garage over here, but I know there's times you send to him. So, you know, like, I, I just want to make sure that we try to keep things as fair as we can. Everybody either through rents and or ownerships paying taxes, we should try to spread it out the best we can. Um, see what, you know, we'll see what happens.
Like our guys, obviously, if there's a reason, if we decide there's two cars and we call two tow, I would only urge that our guys have the opportunity that if they know it's going to be investigated further and as long as on our sheet that they document the reason why we need both cars in one place is because there's going to be ongoing investigation.
And, and if we do something like that, like maybe if we look after, maybe Chris, uh, the chief every three months looks and if somebody's way behind in toes, then maybe we make it up at the end of that quarter or whatever, then you don't have to do it. Like, we'll figure that out if it turns into there's an inequity as far as people not, you know, like some getting more than others. The, um, the other thing, uh, Sean, are we going to require anybody? I thought one of the things we talked about was background checks on employees that are operators coming out. I, that's in, I thought I seen it in there for the ownership, but it also didn't it say for the employees as well?
It, it's, it's included for all.
Okay, all right. I thought that's what I read. And, um, with the, uh, workers' comp and the insurance, I think maybe we, we put something in that, um, we're, we're required to be notified through their agent if it's dropped. Or we have the right to maybe do a spot. You know, on them, because I know the big game with workers' comp, people will get a policy. They have the certificate, they can show you the beginning of the year and then, then call their agent the next day and say, you know, I'm done. I think that, you know, those that ha- are required by law to have that, we should have some reassurance because of that to ensure that they're carrying that because of those people out on our scene, if they would get hurt, I don't want us to be dragged into that. So. The other, one other thing, the five hundred thousand dollar limit, I don't even know if they make policies now for insurance. I was thinking, I think, I think things are pushing now to, to two million, but I think one million for insurance limits on general liability and some of the other bigger ticket instead of five hundred thousand.
Yeah, the fi- the five hundred thousand seem to be, um, pretty typical across the, the Commonwealth. Um, but I understand what you're saying, that it's typically not written at that level anymore anyway.
Yeah.
Um, so you, you'd wind up with the higher, the higher, uh, coverage anyway.
That was written as a minimum, right?
Yeah.
Anything I look at, like, reason the companies got away, at one time a million was standard and five hundred thousand was kind of being phased out. But you, you get a major claim, five, you know, five hundred thousand, something major that it doesn't cover. Think that's all I had here. Oh, one other thing, like if somebody's removed off the list, Sean, I, I think maybe we should up it more than one year. If somebody blatantly does something, you know, penalize one year to me is nothing. Like, I think it should be maybe either two or three. Just so that people know there's repercussions if we have to remove them for, you know, whatever dishonesty, whatever. That, you know, there, there's a, there's a penalty to it. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Dave. If the board is ready, I'll look for a motion then on twenty twenty-five thirteen.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen establishing rules and regulations to provide for a convenient and equitable towing system for a timely removal in certain specified meter vehicles on public rights away or public property within the township to include, uh, comments made by supervisors.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to subdivision and land development. The first item there is ordinance number five, which is a text amendment. This would be forwarding on to Township Planning Commission and Cumberland County Planning Department. Any, anything from staff? Yeah, Harry, go ahead.
Carl, before we vote on this text amendment, um, I would like to share my thoughts on why I'm not in favor of installing solar panels in our community. Um, they have limited efficiencies in certain climates. Uh, solar panels perform best in areas where consistent sunlight and if the community experience frequent cloud cover, heavy rainfall or long winters, the energy yield and these panels could be insufficient to justify their installation. The other thing is, uh, environmental impact. Um, although solar panel, solar energy is clean, the production of solar panels is not entirely environmentally friendly. Um, I have a couple articles that talks about how Amazon had, uh, solar panels on their rooftop. And they took them offline last year because of, uh, fires and electrical explosions. Um, the other article that I have is solar panel or solar tech as by Epic News, uh, China's Trojan Horse. And there's another article on senators, senators demand investigation and possible Chinese kill switches in U S power grid. Um, I'm not in favor of, uh, solar panels because of some of the articles and some of the research that I did.
Got it. Okay.
So I'm voting no.
Right? Anything, any other comments from the board?
I do have a question for either Scott, Aaron, Ray or Sean.
Dev.
Okay, is, for whoever, is there, has anybody seen any ordinances where like they cover like parking areas and like shopping centers with them? Like, cause my, my point is the sun hits the asphalt. All that does is, is draw heat. We might as well get something out of it. Like if it's going onto a solar panel. Has anybody seen where they've done that, like either in a commercial, um, setting where they have those covering? It also gives the people shade for their vehicles.
Yeah, one, one of my favorite examples of that, and I know it was, anyone could answer, but is, uh, at the Citizens Bank Park, a big Phillies fan, they, they have that for the parking there. It's awesome.
I've never seen that.
Yeah, it's very cool. The whole, the whole park, the, the whole parking area is covered by solar panels.
You're shaded.
Yeah, you're shaded. It's really nice to tailgate and then, yeah.
Yeah, Dave.
Get free energy.
The way we wrote it was that it could be as a primary or accessory use. So if, uh, so if somebody was, you know, did qualify as a solar farm, right? That means it met the definition of a solar farm in the zoning ordinance, meaning that you're selling back to the grid. As if they have covered parking, then they can put it on top of there or they can put it on top of the building. And again, this motion, um, an agenda item is just to set the hearing date for August and to forward this to the planning commission and uh, so.
Yeah, I just think.
No, yeah, so we wrote it that you could, yes, if theoretically, if they, if someone had covered parking, absolutely, they could, they could put it on top of there. Um.
But if they didn't have covered parking, you couldn't cover the lot with this.
No, yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess, I mean, I guess you could, but we wouldn't mandatory that you cover the lot to, to do it. If that's what you're talking about, like have mandatory.
No, 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 I'm saying if somebody came in and say they bought the, the common or. No, 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 I'm saying if somebody came in and say they bought the, the common or the, the commons. And they wanted to do it like say Walmart or even down at the square. They wanted to do a certain percentage of it. I thought that's a good way.
Oh, I, okay, I see what you're saying. So. The way that we have it set right now is that, um. Solar farms, right, if they're selling back to the grid, pretty much is the basic one of this, they're only allowed currently by kit, additional use in the I two zone. What the text amendment on the table is, is this firm and their client, which presented to the board last month. They would like to extend this use as a conditional use in the I one zone. So talking about Wegmans or. Uh, the Wegmans Plaza or Walmart, those are commercial zones, so they could not do a solar farm. Now, if they had. Solar panels that were just for the facility and not selling it back to the grid, they could do that.
Well, my thing is all of them eventually, for I think most part, unless you're only doing partial, we're gonna. Run, run it back to the grid, but this company, is that something that they do as well? That's what I'm kind of getting when they come in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's something you could ask them. I know their intent though, right? Based off of what they talked about, and I don't wanna speak for them, because they're gonna have their whole hearing, right? And, you know, in August. But their intent was to line those industrial buildings and then sell it back to the grid.
Good.
Yeah, thanks, Dave, Scott. Um, Mr. Franklin, I think you had some comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Don Franklin, Two Matter Drive, for the record, also chairman of the zoning hearing board. Is this the correct address of the people that are submitting this? It's for, for the property at one eighty Cost Road? Is that the correct address?
Yeah, uh, one of the properties that they identified last month was one eighty Cost Road.
That's a fascinating choice of location. Considering. All the activity around the zoning hearing board's decision back in January of twenty-four regarding this property.
Uh, for those that don't know, there's an ongoing, um, case, um, for a zoning hearing board. Um, denial for a building expansion. Uh, this would be separate use. Conditional use, um, they would go through a conditional use hearing if this went through.
Okay. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question was just for clarification, because the address just struck me as odd.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Franklin. Any other comments or questions?
Um, I will state, although I am not against solar entirely, as Harry spoke about. Um, I'm not in favor of putting this in the light industrial zone. I think it makes sense in the general industrial zone, but not the light industrial zone, so, um, just to make that clear.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Anybody then willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, forward the application to amend the Silver Spring Township Code. With two, one, four point B corresponding to the below referenced sections of the Silver Spring Township zoning ordinance of twenty twenty-two and amended. As amended. Provide for so, sorry, provide for solar, for solar farms. As a use permitted by conditional use in subject, in. Is subject to specific criteria set to the township plant. Set, set to the Township Planning Commission, Cumberland County Planning Department. And the Township Engineer and to establish a public hearing date of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Nancy. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Dave, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that motion carries then three, two. Thanks, everyone, for that. We move on to second item. We did have a request to table. This preliminary and final land development plan, so with that, I. A- any staff want to add anything to that? I think that's pretty much all we, all we know at this point. Uh, yeah, the, uh, late table just came in. Um, they said they wanted to clean up some stuff before they come see you next month. Okay, so then I'll look for a motion to table and then also a motion on the plan review time extension. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to table.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, and then look for a motion on the plan review time extension.
I will make a motion to approve.
Dave moved on the extension. Is there a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. Okay, under new business, first item is, I wanted to bring a discussion to the board. Um, this has to do with. The zoning, uh, Texaco Road primarily. Um, the reason I wanted to do that is. I think there'll be some agreement that, um. These parcels perhaps weren't scrutinized enough, uh, during the comprehensive plan and then the subsequent zoning changes. Um. And I think that the, the fact is that we were unfortunately, I think, distracted and our attention turned to a lot of other parcels. Um, I don't feel personally that these, like I said, were scrutinized quite enough. Um, just as a reminder, I know everybody probably knows this, but. Some of the uses that are allowed in I two are recycling facilities, truck stops, truck terminals, drop lots, heavy industrial. And of course warehousing. Um, so I don't know that anybody could argue that those are the right uses. I think Don brought this up earlier. When we look at zoning and, um, infrastructure to support that, I think. That that argument is not one that can be made. There are also a number of terminology and. Um. Things mentioned in the comprehensive plan that actually would counter to that zone, for example. Most intensive uses incompatible with residential, uh, it talks about these being along major roads, et cetera, so. What I wanted to bring to the board was, you know, keep it short, I won't keep, keep going on that, but, um, have a discussion on that, understand if there's agreement to. Ask staff and our, um, and our contractors to have a look at that area. Um, believe all that area was I one prior to that change that had occurred. So I know there's a lot of energy, um, in that area related to some things that are ongoing. Um, and I want to, so I wanted to bring that to the board for a discussion and ultimately, um, my recommendation personally would be to have a look at at least. Uh, switching that back to I one. There may even be some potential for some mixed use there, uh, if any of that makes sense for residential or some other. Uh, buffering zones between the heavier uses there. So in a nutshell, that's what this agenda item is. Um, I don't have much else to say about it. I think everybody knows where I stand on. I'd like to move in that direction, so. I just wanted to bring that to the board for some discussion and see what we would like to do there.
I, I absolutely agree with what you're saying. We need to take a look at or have staff take a look at it. Move it back to I one, some mixed use.
I don't know, I think mixed use is a mistake because then you're gonna create same issue. Sean, I have a question in light of where we're at with that. That ultimately, if we devalue that property, we're on the hook, correct?
Now, well, the, the case, the case law is, is such that as long as they can, they can. Use the property under whatever you may rezone it to, uh, that it's, it's not a taking, so you're not on, on the hook. If you were to. Rezone it in such a way that they could not develop or, or extract value out of, out of that land, then, then that's a different story.
Lesser value like there's.
Yeah, the lesser value, the, the courts don't really go into that. They just determine whether there's, there's value to it at all. Um, and whether the property can, continue to be utilized.
Yeah, I, I think when that occurred. I remember the discussion pertaining like. With the flood, flood plain there. I mean, we knew that there wouldn't be a truck, like a truck stop because it would not make sense there. But we looked at the fact, what they could do with the usable ground and we did not, it didn't present itself. To the fact that you could put a, a big warehouse in there. We figured it would be another use on a smaller scale. Nobody thought. You know. That that was gonna turn into them doing what they proposed to do, so.
Yep, that's, that's my recollection.
Yeah, I, yeah, like it wasn't malice. I think we looked at it like it would be used for. That, a little bit heavier use, but it would not be on a, a grand scale that would affect the area. Nobody thought, I don't believe in a million years, somebody would do what they proposed, but, um, yeah, I. My concern is that we do not financially take anything from. The property owner, you know, as far as what they would get. That would be my main concern. I do agree, we need to. Balance with those that live in that area too, so. I'm not. I would like to see, you know, like something where. The value. Of the one, I two to I one, what the implications, ramifications would be. I think we have to be fair to everybody. Involved in this. So that, that would be my concern.
Carl, one thing, um, we are talking about some of the parcels along Texaco Road, south of Texaco Road. Um, I was part of the zoning update committee and I'm not sure when those parcels were changed from light industrial to general industrial. I know that that was part of the. Uh, reasoning behind the change to the Yorlitz Farm, uh, had something to do with those parcels and businesses along Texaco. Um, like I said, I was on the zoning update committee. I don't remember anyone bringing that to us. I don't remember E P D, our consultant, say anything. So I'm not sure why, when those uses have not changed, we would change them from general, or from light to general. I would. Be in favor of putting them back to light, um, along Texaco, and that may impact other parcels there as well.
Yeah, thanks, Laura.
Carl, when did they change like long Texaco? I thought the only change. We made was the open.
Yeah, that's basically all of, I don't know if, I don't have a map handy. I did look at it earlier, but it's basically all of the I one along Texaco is I two. Currently. So, just question, right? Cause. So are we talking, cause I'm gonna pull this map up so everyone can see. Let me just get it so everyone else on the public can see as well.
I think there's more.
So, for the staff part of this that wants to look at it, so we want to, hold on, this might freeze here. So we want to re, everything right here, if you could see my cursor here. This is everything that was changed during the two and a half year comprehensive rezone and the comprehensive plan and the zoning update. These are everything that was changed in that corridor from one fourteen to about Texaco, right? And the discussions that we all had in all of those was matching. Everything that was up here and with the higher use that these were heavy industrial uses, not light industrial, was the reason why we made this I two up here. That's what we, that's what we all talked about for years.
To, Scott, you, you're talking, say, for instance. The old Travcon building. Michael Burger shop.
That's, that, that was the, that was, we had multiple discussions for years about changing this up to I two, up here to match it.
Yeah, but they're currently like, say, Wayne Stevenson's old shop there, West Kem. That's, is that an I two or, I thought that was an I one.
Everything here was I one previously.
Yeah.
But when we had the discussions of where I two actually laid and the uses that were out there, that's why we changed it to I two.
And part of my question with that was, the businesses had not changed, so why was it being changed to. I two when the businesses were actually I one businesses?
Again, we went through this for years. And we talked about upping it and we all agreed that heavy industrial. Outlaid most of this area and that's what we agreed on, all of us and voted on.
We did not all agree. I did not agree to that.
It was a five oh vote on the zoning map.
You're correct. What I'm saying is that when it was brought to us by E P D, the various changes of parcels throughout the zoning update. This was not something brought to the zoning update committee to make that change. It was done without that input.
I, you know, Scott, I have another question for you. If. I thought the only parcel we looked at was. The parcel. That was in behind those. The question I have. The parcels that are along Texaco, that, that's ever since I was a small kid, that has been. And in, for the most part, an industrial area, especially on the south side. Um, would it be wise? Especially with. Depending on what occurs back there and we have the Sheetz facility potentially coming with all those trucks. The properties that are along Texaco from one fourteen back. Would it? Be a smarter, especially the ones out near the end, a smarter move? To maybe adjust their zoning where, you know, like. It could be a higher use that would be more suitable for a heavily traveled road, like kind of what, what we looked at pertaining to Hoagstown Road. The day of that being residential slowly closing. Would we be smarter?
If, yeah, if the board wants us to relook at every single use in all of these districts, we could absolutely do that if you would like us to do that.
One, that if somebody elects not to live there because of the traffic. The value of their lot is gonna be worth more if somebody can put, like especially out at the end. Us, like a, a repair garage or a beauty salon or something like compared to a straight residential. Because of the impact with all the traffic, um. I mean, at the end, the, the lot size is gonna predicate what they can do, but. I think. That you're better served looking at it from that angle than you are. That there, there's currently industrial uses there. Regardless of what they are, they generate traffic and I'll be honest with you, when Costco comes. And the hemp parcel builds out Texaco Road. Those people are gonna feel and see the traffic ramifications and increases that people that live along one fourteen. Have seen that have lived there. For at least, you know, going back twenty, twenty-five years, the increase, i- it's gonna occur and, and. I'm just being honest.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, all I can say is if the board wants, if the direction from the board to staff is to relook at. All those districts and the uses in there, absolutely, we can do that if you would like us to.
So, I think that's what you're, yeah, Scott, that.
Appreciate the minimum, we're going back to I one and then maybe there's, uh, some further ideas. Yeah, and that, yeah, we can relook at uses and then if the board would like. To expand uses in each one of those, we would just, you know, I would feel better getting. Direction from the board, exactly what uses you want in each industrial district, rather than me throwing a dart at stuff.
Yeah, I, I. Regardless what happens with that parcel. That's in litigation, I'm gonna be honest with you. That intersection is gonna fail. The traffic's gonna increase on Texaco. It, it. It's a fallacy to think that that is gonna change.
If you're, are you talking about extending I one out? Is that, is that the point you're making to the east?
Well, what I'm saying is. Regardless of what we did with that industrial.
Hmm.
The traffic's gonna be the traffic on that road. It's no different than what like J L and them deal with on Woods Drive.
Hmm.
We have to look at those township roads that run east, west, north, south do. Are gonna start to become, they're gonna, the classifications are gonna change regardless of what we do, because it isn't so much. Traffic that, that occurs from those roads. It's, it's no different than one fourteen. It's traffic feeding it either from other municipalities or what's off the side.
Hmm.
So, do we do the people that live there any justice? Say, leaving their houses zone residential, especially out at the end, then to say, you know, the amount of traffic there, it's better suited. That if it's like, say for those homes out there from the curve. Where Lars Development goes back to one fourteen. To have a different zoning class that if they go to sell it and somebody wants. To, you know, put a beauty salon like in one of them smaller homes or like, you know, we have the garage area twin wheel, field twin wheel. That, that it's some sort of use that. You know. I think the days of it being residential are gonna dissipate in, in that area just because of the amount of the volume.
Got it, okay. Scott, can you scroll back to the proposed? I'm trying to remember if the mixed, the mixed use. The which, which mixed use, because so the mixed use, so the mixed use A was specifically for the H, uh, the H S S settlement and, um, stuff like that.
I think the B, the one that.
Correct, so.
One fourteen.
Yep, and. Yep, and M U B starts about where, um.
Does it go far enough up to that?
Yeah, it's, it's about right here. It's right where the, um, daycare is. And it goes, uh, Mulberry, it goes from Mulberry all the way down to the Borough.
With the parcels there, like on the northeast side where Dave's saying of Texaco, are they in mixed use B already?
Maybe it's only facing out.
Yeah, I think it's only facing out. I think it's anything that actually touches the corridor.
Okay, maybe we could look at something like a mixed, I can't remember what's in B, but maybe.
Not, in that mixed use B, it's, it's, it's very, very limited compared to the settlement. But there is, there is expanded uses there, yes.
I, I'm thinking Scott more so commercial, cause up, where we have a, a lack. Of, of lot size and we talked about that with the Stevens Drive Track. I had spoke to the previous owner and then the investors that bought that, trying to get them. That would have made sense. That's one thing that, that the whole area that the region lacks in is smaller commercial lots. For those people that are starting out or running a small business that can afford to buy, to get started. And to be honest with you, you're doing a disservice if you leave that residential, when anybody goes to sell those properties. First thing I would do is if I was going to buy it, I'd complain about the traffic and hammer them down in price because of the fact you're going to be dealing with it. Where if we, we do something to that regard. The traffic volumes warrant what we're doing and those people will at least financially be able to sell their properties. And. You know, like be able to maybe get some equity out of it instead of it going down in value. And I think it makes sense for the use along here. It isn't just for that, but it also makes sense how things are progressing in that area.
Yeah, like I said. If, you know, you know how I've always been, if you give me a, if you, you know, if you give staff a direction of exactly what you want, right? Other than, right, then we can look at that. If we want to expand industrial, we can expand the uses and mixed use. A lot of the mixed use stuff has guaranteed, you know, you need to have sewer and septic, or I'm sorry, you need to have sewer and water. Hookups, you need to have certain density, you have to have certain lot coverage, so. What we do on over here might affect what's going over there, so it's not going to be a quick fix. Because a lot of that was designed for smaller lots, not bigger lots that are already developed. So we just got to keep that in mind that it's going to be a bigger overhaul than just, you know, switching a couple of colors on the, on the zoning map.
I think we also want to address what Mr. Franklin said about changing things to do with the kind of traffic it generates. So, you know. You would want to be mindful of that when you. Change the zoning for something.
Yeah, we're gonna have the, like, just like the zoning ordinance, we'll have all the uses in there that you're allowed. You know, you're either allowed to do by permitted by right or conditional use. If we want to expand those, we can. If we want to delete some. We can, we can do whatever the board would like to do.
Okay, let's, um, I think we probably.
We have a bunch of public comment on this from here and everyone else.
Okay, I think what I was going to say is, um, yeah, let's get to kind of some draft or some prototypes and we can. I don't think we're going to be able to go parcel by parcel or anything at the moment, right? So I think we have a general direction, so. Let's, let's move in that direction. Yeah, we can go to, we can take some comment too on this.
Uh, do you want to go in person?
Yeah, let's go online first. We'll, we'll switch it up. Sorry, Randy, don't mean to keep you standing. I'll be right to you.
Uh, Ricky, uh, hold on, let me find here. Go ahead, Ricky.
Can you all hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Um, Ricky McLaren, one, one, one Stephen Drive. Um, I just want to first say that I'm. So, so grateful that the Board of Supervisors, um, are bringing this up and bringing it forward. And asking the staff to take a look at this situation, um, I think that what, uh. What, uh, Carl, Carl, I'm supervisor, what is your last name again? I'm totally blanking.
That's okay, it's Mockamore.
Uh, Supervisor Mockamore initially said with actually taking a look at the properties that were rezoned from I one to I two. I just want to lift up that I hope that the board, uh, proceeds with that recommendation. Um, I'm, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I'm concerned that, uh, Dave Lankers. Or sorry, Supervisor Lankers commentary kind of clouded that and, um. Supervisor Lanker, I know you didn't not, you didn't mean it this way, um, but it was actually really. Upsetting to hear what you were saying, um, because from someone who lives right next to these parcels. What I heard from that, and I know you didn't intend it, but what I heard was. Let's just change their residential properties, because when stuff goes in, that makes it so they can't live there anymore. At least they can sell their property and get out. But my husband and I were, you know, early thirties, we put all of our savings into our home and we. Expect to live here the rest of our lives.
That doesn't pertain to your property. I'm talking the individuals out at one fourteen in Texaco. That their houses are on that corridor up to maybe like the curve. There, that traffic's going to stack there. I'm not talking like Laura's development, your development, I'm strictly talking the people that houses front. That will front on to Texaco Road that we need to look at.
That's helpful clarification, but I just want to like reiterate that. I don't think that should be the recommendation from the board for the staff to look at in itself. I would like you to still recommend looking at all of the other properties and moving them back to I one or even something less. Um, I know you are extremely concerned about those property owners. And what their value of their property is, but I have yet to hear you talk about our property values. Um, and our way of life and if we're going to be able to live safely in our homes. So changing more things to commercial or I one or I two. In such a way that moves them up in this scale is not protecting the people who.
I think if you would have listened at the beginning, I said, I want to make sure that we protect everyone. The property owners that are affected directly through ownership and those that live near it, I said, I think we have to balance that. And you, you need to think about what traffic's going to occur on Texaco Road before. You worry about the fact that those people that have residential there. You need to think what's going to happen in the next five or 10 years with them. It, it doesn't mean that they can't live there residentially, it just means that if they go to sell that house. That there might be better uses for it. Due to traffic, uh, counts and or the impacts that the traffic does. That it doesn't devalue their house in the end.
This is all devaluing our homes, including my home, living right off of Texaco Road. I like, I just want to be clear, everything is devaluing our homes. Does that make sense to you?
You, you're not going to hear, if I had it my way, your house wouldn't be there. The warehouses wouldn't be here. It would be like, I think the only. In the seventies at that point, there was the industrial buildings that are outfit fronting, or about two thirds of them. Fronting Texaco, I think Mr. Potiger's house was there not too long after, um, we moved there. And there was a couple of other homes in the woods there. That was it.
I understand and like I, I, I respect you as a person and as, uh, someone who is. Doing a, you know, civil duty to our community, but I just feel as though. It feels like people are constantly trying to look back and defend their past actions. And this is one of the first times that it feels like you all are really looking forward. Right? And trying to make sure that we're protecting people and your commentary in particular tonight. Was disappointing and upsetting, so it may not have been your intention. And it doesn't, like, I hope that it's not the way the. The whole thing and directive goes, but I just want to name it for you, because from someone who was a resident who lives in the area. It was super exciting and then you started talking and it felt very, uh, minimizing.
It has nothing to do with minimizing. What I'm looking at is, I'm thinking about the individuals that live right along Texaco Road. What it's going to do to them and what's the traffic impact. It starts to impact them and say that they decide that they want to move. What it does to them and what's the best possible use for those properties right there. The size of those lots are very small. You're not talking about a Target going in. A giant, you're talking about a hair salon, probably a, uh. Attorney's office, something like a, a small use. But it doesn't present itself for, uh, residential use right there in that area, right along. Texaco Road anymore, the traffic stacking, it, it's got to be tough for people to get in and out of there.
Okay, Ricky, that.
Well, Supervisor Lanker, can I just say one more thing? I would ask. Yeah, I would ask that you, before you make broad comments like that, talk to the people who live there, is it, is their homes that you're referring to? With the implication being they're going to have to move anyway, better get ready to get out. And two, I would ask that you just add on to what you just said, that you still think all of the rest of the parcels. On Texaco Road that were moved to I two should still be looked at. And potentially put down to I one, and then that would make me feel much better if you would verbalize that.
All I ask is our staff looks at it. I, I want to get the facts, so we try to get this right. Instead of doing something that's reactionary, I'd rather us look at everything and try to come up with a comprehensive plan. That benefits everybody in the area the best we can.
Thank you, I, I apologize. Thank you for, um, communicating with me respectfully on this.
Uh, no, I'm just, I just want you to know where I stand.
Okay, thanks Dave. Thanks Ricky, Scott. Anybody else online? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Randy Duncan, Green Ridge Road, um. This has more to do with Route one fourteen, but, uh, it, it solves problems. I've brought this up. Uh, in relation to planning projects, uh, uh, that have occurred or were, uh. Looking for input on Wurthville Road as well. I was surprised when I moved here that there wasn't a center turning lane being put down. When, for the effort that went into improving Route one fourteen, moving towards Mechanicsburg. And, uh, what happens from that perspective is when these road expansions occur. They nibble away at both sides of the road, devaluing the entire corridor. Uh, I eventually see at, at least a center turning lane that comes down that, through that corridor and. My, what I've proposed in the, in the past is that rather than sitting, and the, the net effect of that is, is really ridiculous. From a municipal standpoint, state or, uh, standpoint, because. You're devaluing the properties and you're collecting, uh, revenue from them after you've devalued them. That, it, I know it is not technically supposed to be considered. But what should occur in this corridor is that one side or the other, uh, be taken for the next improvement that occurs there. And the new roadway can be built without having any effect on the existing traffic while that occurs. And once that new roadway is completed on one side or the other. Then that other remaining property that is currently the corridor is, uh, added on to the remaining properties further. Putting them further away from the roadway. Uh, increasing the value on that side of, uh, side of the property. And then in, in regards to Mr. Lanker's comments over there, I, I agree, I, I. I wouldn't consider, uh, living on a busy corridor like that and I frequently use that road. And I frequently see people having problems getting on and off of it, uh, safely. And, uh, so it is, uh, kind of disconcerting to, uh, you know, see how things occur. When, uh, that, that are actually detriment, you know, an improvement that detrimentally affects our fiscal, uh, situation. And as well as the school district and county, so. Thank you.
Thanks Randy, appreciate it. Mr. Potiger?
I'm Mark Potiger, forty-four Texaco Road. I moved there in nineteen seventy-nine is when I moved there. The farm across from me was owned by Paul Ryder. It was zoned agriculture. So when I hear this, you know, this is what it's zoned, this is what it should be. Cause it's what it always was, this, this, um, industrial was always along there. That's incorrect. It was from about Stevenson up to the tank farm. I think that was zoned light industrial. Everything behind me where, uh, Spring Meadow Reserve is now and other properties around me, it was all agriculture. So it's changed over a period of time. Those lots that are there that were zoned, changed, changed to, um, I two, that were I one. Those, 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 uh, businesses, they don't affect me. They don't affect, I don't think the residents around us. They are there from like maybe eight o'clock in the morning, maybe seven, and at four or five o'clock in the evening, they go home. Uh, an I two zone, which would create these warehouses. That could operate twenty-four, seven, like what was proposed at the Tringle Springs Trade Center. And possibly over a thousand tractor trailers a day. We opened this meeting starting about the truck traffic on State Road and Texaco Road, about how bad it is. Now we're talking about possibly, which I think is a good thing, going back to light industrial, which is less truck traffic. And we're acting like, no, no, we should keep it industrial two. I don't, I don't see the logic behind it. Yes, there's going to be traffic there, but the type of traffic is a main concern. A car is a lot different than a fifty-three foot tractor trailer or a tanker filled with eight thousand gallons of gasoline. It's, it's completely different. The land there that, that's still in litigation, that should go back. I, I feel definitely to light industrial. I'd like to see it go back even farther. When the owner bought that land, I'm sure it was zoned agriculture. So being able to sell it as light industrial or even a residential is an upgrade to when they purchased it. So saying that, you know, they can't, if they can't sell it as industrial two is harmful to them. I think is, is not, is not correct. They, they have, they, you know, their value of their land has increased and so they're selling it at a profit. Yeah, the traffic is, is the biggest thing. It, it's not so much the use of what's being done. Like I said, the businesses along. Those businesses right there that are along Texaco, you can see there's about ten of them. Those businesses by themselves. You would think, okay, someone's not going to come in and build a large warehouse, but a company could come in that has mega bucks like we've seen. They could buy up those properties and now all of a sudden here comes another one million square foot warehouse. That's going to create a lot more truck traffic. So now not only do we have Costco's coming in, that's going to make a big difference. We've already talked about that. But everything is compounding and making it worse. We can, we can do things, we can zone things. Zoning itself should be a buffer. You shouldn't have an, uh, industrial two property up against residential property. You go from, you know, industrial two to light industrial, down to maybe residential. And that's, that could be the buffering of it, but what we're talking about here is just putting, you know, industrial two right there. It's surrounded by residential, uh, developments right now. Had a lot on my mind, but. That's basically where I'm at with that. I mean, it, it, the. It, it needs to. Complement. The residents that are there. What, what needs to be done, needs to complement the existing. The existing shouldn't have to change. To fit what somebody wants to do. What is there first? And then the people and their houses and everybody around there need to coincide and be together. And I think the, the new businesses that want to come in, they have to, they have to complement the existing, uh, properties. And, and work together and the traffic, like I said, is a big concern. And, uh, having that I two, it's going to just make it worse. And none of those properties that are I one, I don't know any of those owner, I know them all and I don't think any of them asked to be zoned industrial two. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I have a question for Scott. Scott, um, that. Facility that was tabled today that was being proposed. Zoning for that.
Uh, currently, I believe that is, so that would be I, uh, I one? Uh, currently I believe that is, so that would be I, I one?
That ultimately that would affect that.
Well, that plan's in, so any changes, any changes you make now wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't make.
It's owned I one currently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, but that plan is in before any changes. So that plan is allowed to go under the ordinance of which it's submitted under.
Which is I one.
Right. Now, again, if you decide to change uses and make what was a permitted use, not a use in there, then you'd be making a nonconformity and any expansions to that would, would require a special exception from the zoning hearing board for that. And we have processes for that, right? But that'd be again, if you're changing a permitted use out of a district that it's currently in.
Yeah. Like we were approached with that the other, what was it, a year ago? I mean, if you're looking at truck traffic, that's going to be nothing but truck traffic that dropped the maintenance facility for the Sheetz truck.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, they had that planned before we had the change in the drop lot, right? You know, they had that before it. They withdrew that. We made the changes and then they applied every single criteria that we put on them to that plan.
Understand, but that's what 90 trucks, they run three shifts, they're going to do a minimum of
Yeah, I mean.
Two to three.
They'll have, yeah, I don't have the traffic study on me, but they'll have their traffic engineer, you know, next.
Yeah, well Seven Brew had a traffic engineer too, so.
Denise, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, 32 Texaco Road, I agree with what Mark said. Clearly there is a lot of residential off of Texaco Road. So if there's an infrastructure issue that needs addressed, sending all the traffic down Texaco is not exactly the best answer. I think that it should go to I one. I question why that property where the Trundle Spring Trade Center was ever I two, because obviously the flood plain, we live in an area that's predisposed to sinkholes with the limestone in the ground. So when you start having impermeable area in different areas, you are opening up potential areas of sinkholes around. So I think that taking it back to what it was is being proactive. We were already reactive because of the warehouse. Now let's be proactive, fix this. Because a giant warehouse there would affect so many people in such a negative way. And obviously Costco is what it is. We're going to have to deal with the traffic and may have to look at infrastructure and other ways to mitigate that. But let's not compound it by allowing more I two or.
I've, I have a question for you. You live along Texaco.
Yeah.
How do you feel about what I said pertaining to your property value and or the future? If we look at from say 114 back, some sort of limited commercial so far back, because ultimately it isn't so much take out of the trade center, take out the industrial across the street. You're going to see between the quarry, you have the facilities that are being built on that property. There's going to be more when the residential component comes into it and the commercial out along the front and Costco. How do you feel about what I had said? Because you ultimately can live there as long as you want, but what I worry about is if, if it comes a day where you say, I don't want to live there because I know what it's like along 114 and you, you want to sell. Ultimately, that's going to devalue your property compared to, and, and is it the best use to have residential along Texaco? Because you're going to have a lot of commuter traffic on that road. You're not going to have somebody who wants to raise kids along that.
Well, I mean, I get what you're saying. I'm kind of hoping that there are other solutions for the traffic. Personally, I, I moved there because I liked the location. It was quiet, but close to everything. It was perfect, right? And I think most people that bought their homes there bought it for that very same reason. So there is a difference between tractor trailer traffic and vehicle traffic. The businesses that are there now, they don't impact our homes at all. So, I mean, they're very low impact. So I guess if we had low impact, I mean, you're talking about a warehouse that's like one dock door on Texaco, you know.
But I, I've seen the impact, like we used to ride our bikes as kids back Texaco Road, the mid seventies. You, you'd be lucky, there was a car, the most we've seen for the trucks coming out of the deal, Texaco facility. But it wasn't horrendous. Same on 114, rush hour, you could walk across that. You might have to wait 10 or 15 seconds, but you could walk across the road to go to the development across the street. I've seen the progression and
Yeah.
what's going to occur on the roads off of it is as you have development infill back through there, you become the next collector or arterial road, because everything that feeds onto that, you inherit. So, I mean, I just, I, I want to be fair to those along there as well. That in the future, it becomes a challenge for you to sell, like that people use that, whether it bothers them or not, to get a better price on your house. So there's a devaluing of it regardless, just with the traffic.
Yeah, it absolutely could do that if it go, yeah, exponentially worse.
Thanks Denise. Okay, any other comment? Okay. I think we have some direction there.
Yeah. So, so again, we're going the entire corridor from 114 and Texaco, oh, how far down? Are we only looking at what we already rezoned? Are we going the whole? So we're only looking at what we rezoned, so just right here.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
But, but the road itself, I think we ought to look to where the roundabout goes. Texaco itself, we ought to look at a comprehensive.
So I mean, you want us to go down to the, you know, the.
To the four-way stop?
To the four-way stop or?
About, yeah. Just for the properties that are along, like the residential, like they have to look at long.
Right. So nothing, nothing was changed down here. That's what this map shows. The only properties that were rezoned is what's outlined here.
Right. So I think there's agreement on that. And then there's a suggestion to, while we're there, potentially look at some other additional uses above and beyond residential. I think that's what, that's what, I don't want to speak for Dave, but I think that's what the suggestion is.
Okay. So, all right. So it's ag on this side, it's R1 here, and it's industrial over here, industrial one. So just.
I think we need to be careful. We're, we're, you know, arguably, you could say trying to fix what, what may, I'll just say, maybe, maybe it was a mistake. So if we do that, then at the same time, add additional I one, it's a slippery, it's a bit of a slippery slope there. So, or you're saying?
Long Texaco would be some sort of like, like commercial, like something similar to the mixed use.
Okay.
Maybe not quite, just, yeah, I'm not saying industrial.
Okay.
I went along there. I'm saying some sort of use.
A mix, okay.
Residential because of the increase in the traffic volume.
Okay.
Yeah, there's sort of use.
Okay. You, you good with that Scott? Is it?
Yeah, I just, I just want, I, you know, I, I think most of the staff appreciates when we have like a narrowed in thing so that I don't have 16 different options to you. And then we start pulling different things.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks Scott. Everybody good? Okay, we'll keep moving on to new business. Well, sorry, the second item under new business. Land preservation, new applicants. I'll turn it over to Laura.
Okay. Next two agenda items concern the Brashear and Covell Farms. Scott, if you could pull up the, the picture of that, that'd be great. Both properties are situated in the northwestern part of the township, near Wurtsville Road, Rich Valley Road and Sherwood Drive. You'll note in this area, there are already two preserved farms. They're in dark green there. There is also another farm in red that is in process. We're expecting to settle on that property in July. The Brashear Farm consists of two properties and they are intended to remain separate even under the preservation. The Covell parcels are also two parcels, but they are expected to combine into one lot. In March, members of the Land Preservation Review Board and I personally toured the properties. Following those visits, the Land Preservation Review Board voted at its April 17th meeting to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that we formally adopt these farms into the land preservation program and that we get appraisals done on those. In your packets, you'll receive memos from the Chair of the Land Preservation Board, which is Frank Ebelock, outlining the reasons why the board members feel that these are valuable properties and should be preserved. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have. And Frank is also in the audience. So I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions if you want to talk to him about his memos. So leave that up to the board.
Thanks Laura. Comments or questions? Okay, here now, look for motions on two A and B. Frank, you're off the hook tonight. It's one second.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the Brashear and Covell properties into the township's land preservation program and to authorize appraisals in the not to exceed amounts specified.
There's a motion on the table from Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. We'll move on to three, item number three. Laura?
All right. Okay, I'm going to read a statement on these properties. There's a little bit of confusion there may be for those who are in the audience, reading these agenda items. So I just want to make sure everything's clear. Scott, thank you for pulling up the map. I'll draw your attention to the map on the screen. You'll notice the two farms shown in red are the Radaba Farms. One's on Green Hill Road, the other is on North Locust Point Road. They combined together are 260 acres. You notice some of the other properties on the map, the dark green are again farms that are preserved. And the yellow is the Appalachian Trail Corridor. Some of that's in Silver Spring Township and some of that is in Middlesex. That shows that corridor open space there. And then you also notice Stony Ridge Park is right in the midst of all of that. So we're looking to have all of this land protected and preserved. Let me go into this particular farms, the Radaba Farms. Some of you may have recognized this was on a prior, prior agenda. They were previously discussed at the October 24th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting, where we voted on motions related to their preservation. Now tonight, we're revisiting those items with a few important updates. Back in October, the township voted to purchase conservation easements on both farms in partnership with Cumberland County Farmland Preservation Program. So we were splitting the costs between the county and the township. Separate motions were also approved to provide incentive payment to the landowner. Tonight, we're making two changes. First, we are modifying the easement purchased motions. The Cumberland County Farmland Preservation Program will no longer be part of the funding. Instead, the township will cover the full cost of the easements. Second, we are adding a new motion for each farm to authorize Lancaster Farmland Trust to serve as a consultant for preparing the conservation easements. The previously approved incentive payments remain unchanged. There is no need to revote on those motions. Those motions stand from October. Now let me be absolutely clear. The Cumberland County Farmland Preservation Program did nothing wrong. They are not the reason for these changes. These changes were necessary because of what was described to me as persistent interference from data center developers. What was relayed to me by the landowner is the following. These developers approached the farmer repeatedly with misleading and dishonest claims. They first told him falsely that a group of farmers wanted to purchase his land. Then they claimed that they could build data centers on his land and he could still continue farming the land, another lie. Even after the farmer declined their offers, they returned again and again to the point where his attorney considered seeking court protection due to their ongoing harassment. We do not want to invite developers into this township who do not treat our residents with good faith. People who think that they can get anything they want by throwing enough money at it, at it, and that may even include political dark money, have no place in this township. In this case, they will not be getting what they want. These two productive, beautiful farms will not become data centers. They won't become subdivisions or warehouses either. They will remain farmland forever. Carl, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have about the motions or the farms themselves.
Okay, thanks Laura. Any comments or questions? All right, I'll look for motions then. Three A and B, if the board is so desired.
I move that we approve items A and B, the purchase and preparation of conservation easements on the Radaba Farms.
Laura, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any, that motion carries. And we'll move on to Thousand Acre Land Preservation Celebration. Laura's going to handle this, well, or maybe Ray.
And yes. Let me get my paper. You guys are all going to be sick of hearing from me. Lastly here, in 2013, a majority of voters in Silver Spring Township passed a referendum establishing our municipal land preservation program. Since then, we successfully preserved 17 properties totaling over 828 acres of farmland, woodlands and open space. This July, we're excited to share that three additional properties will be settled through the program, which will push us past a major milestone, over a thousand acres preserved. To mark this achievement and more importantly, to honor the landowners who made this possible, we planned a thousand acre celebration on July 31st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Stony Ridge Park. It will be a modest gathering, just a tent, a few speakers, water and cake, but a meaningful one. Invitations have been sent and a short program is in the works. There's just one issue, how to fund it. Under the Open Space Lands Act, which governs our preservation program, taxpayer dollars allocated for land preservation can only be used to acquire and protect land, not for marketing, outreach or celebrations. As it stands, the seven volunteer members of the Land Preservation Board have generously offered to pay for this celebration out of their own pockets. I don't believe they should have to do this. That's why tonight, we're respectfully requesting 1,300 in township funds to cover the cost of this event. I want to thank Vince and Sharon for leading the planning and Ray for keeping costs low and coordinating logistics. Before the board considers this request, I'd like to highlight two important points. First, thanks to Rob Shaw's suggestion in 2022. Rob, raise your hand. He's in the audience tonight. The Land Preservation Board moved program funds into the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, Pliget. We also invest some of our general fund monies in Pliget as well. He made that suggestion. Since 2023, careful stewardship of those investments has generated over $324,000 in interest. That's enough to preserve at least another 30 acre property. And that's exactly what we intend to keep doing with the extra money that we've earned. Second, preserving land doesn't just protect our open space, it saves taxpayer money. Every acre preserved is one less acre developed. That means fewer demands on our schools, less need for emergency services and fewer new roads for the township to maintain in perpetuity. With that, I'll turn it over to Carl, the Township Board's liaison to the Land Preservation Board, to share his thoughts.
Yeah, I can't summarize it much better than that, but I will say, yeah, I've been involved in some form or fashion, really kind of since the beginning. I guess it's kind of the tail end of the initial grassroots movement. So just reflecting on that, it's over 10 years, right? I see a lot of familiar faces. I've been at this for 11 or 12 years. So it'd be interesting to know just the man hours that have gone into it. I think there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't realize. So just an appreciation for what some of the members are here, the Land Preservation Committee, and of course Laura and everybody else that's involved. So I don't know if we could have sat there in 2014 and imagined that we'd hit this milestone. I think we all wished we would have and, but don't, didn't know when or how or. So it's, it's just interesting to look back and kind of appreciate what, what everyone has, all the hard work that's gone into it. And there's been a lot of ups and downs. A lot of, I think, safe to say, blood, sweat, tears, right? So it's, there's a lot that goes into it. I don't think people really understand. So just, just want to say thanks to the committee that's here and to the landowners that make that commitment. So. But anyway, yeah, I'm looking forward, appreciate Ray and the staff that has helped with some of the planning and Tyler.
Yeah, Tyler and Missy Steimer, they did a great job in, in getting all these distributions and the, the invitation out to everyone.
Yeah. So I think it'll be a fun night, a nice get together. So I won't take up any more time, but Laura.
So I won't take up any more time, but Laura, thanks. Thanks for letting me add a couple of comments on that.
Sure.
So, yeah, with that then, any comments or questions? If not, I'll look.
Yeah, I just had a question. Why didn't they have it at the firehouse or something? Because I seen it was 650 for the tent. It seemed like there could have been some things done there, maybe to curb the expenses a little. But, I mean.
Well, I'm not sure. How much does the firehouse hold? I mean, what, we're expecting maybe 100, 150? I don't know.
It holds a couple hundred in Silver Spring. I'm just trying to think about, you know, keeping the cost down. Either that, or why didn't each of us chip in 250 out of our supervisors' pay to pay for it? And then instead of using taxpayer money?
I mean, I guess we could. I just don't see why we wouldn't want to, being, like I said, how much that we have saved the township by preserving land. I'm not really seeing 1,300 as being a huge expense.
I'm just asking. I'd be willing to entertain that. What about you, Harry?
Okay, it's an idea. We'll see where it goes. We, anyway, Frank, go ahead.
I want to say one thing. The point of preserving all the properties that we've preserved is not to have celebration inside. It's to have it outside. So we could, and at Stony Ridge Park, we can actually see some of the properties that we've preserved.
Yeah.
While we're celebrating that.
But I don't understand where you're coming from. I'm just looking at it. You're going to have, I'm sure, people that are listening in hear $1,300, and they're going to say, that's taxpayer money. So I'm just trying to look at it from that aspect. I know where you're coming from. You're trying to preserve open space, you're out in open space. But I'm looking that there's going to be some naysayers. So that's why I was thinking, $1,300 a taxpayer money. If, that's why I made, if we're going to do it out there, maybe the board can chip in so that somebody doesn't say we're using taxpayer money to have a party.
Well, I can say I kind of understand that. But we are using taxpayer money too.
Frank.
To preserve the properties. And that was not a small number of interest that we've earned. That is able to preserve even more properties. But, you know, you guys are the deciders, and so, you know, we got to do what you guys want.
Frank, I like the idea of the firehouse also. If it rains, it's hot, you know? I mean, if it's hot as it is now, it might be a little bit better on the people that are coming.
Harry, I'm, you know.
Speechless.
No, I'm not speechless. I'm disappointed. That's all I can say.
I'm just thinking about the people that are coming.
We've been doing this. I'm the only one, other than Carl, that's been on this thing since day one. And in fact, I've been on it more than Carl, not any disrespect. I was one of the ones, and so was JL. JL's only been on it nine months shorter than me.
I was on it too.
Yes, you were. So was Carl. JL and I were part of the ones, along with Vince D. Filippo, out going around the township, knocking on people's doors, trying to get them to vote to support this program. 62% of the township voters said, we want this. And I don't think anybody can deny the fact that we've produced. No, we're not out there every week, somebody's coming up and saying, let's preserve my property. We've had some laws, but, uh, 1,000 acres, that's a lot of property. If you lived in Wyoming, this would be nothing.
No one's taking away the excellent work that you've.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we're not saying that, Frank. I appreciate what you've done. I just look at, I kind of agree too, if it's hot. But also, I know there's going to be a contingent of people that'll complain that we're using taxpayer money to fund a party. So that's why I thought either, you know, like, that's why I threw out, if we all chip in, then people can't say we're using taxpayer money.
But where does it end? The mill, the mill events are gone? I mean, how much are we going to say that we're not for putting on community events? The entire community's invited to this. We're talking about cake, ice cream, and water. I'm not seeing this. I'm not seeing. Well, we just put it out.
It's going to be on the website for open invitation.
But it's open.
I thought it was strictly.
No, no.
One is invited.
All right. We sure 1,300's enough then.
We'll get back to you on the RSVPs.
First of all, let's address the venue. And I agree that's out in open space. It's a park that had been a farm. I think it's a nice place to have it. I don't care if it's hot. It's in the evening. Hopefully, you know, no one is going to suffer. I would appreciate the fire company stepping up for that. But I think it's nice to be out in the open for something like this. I think that's important. And these people worked on this, came up with this committee and this plan. And I think it's inappropriate for us to say, well, no, we don't like that idea. I mean, I think that this is what they've created, and I think they deserve to celebrate and be applauded in an area where a lot of these lands, these farms or properties have been preserved.
The invitation was, we knew how many people.
But with some.
We're going to be posting tomorrow on the website, invitation to the public.
Yeah, so that would be my concern. Are we going to have enough with 1,300 if the general public's coming?
We think we'll be fine. We.
Get there early, Dave.
Especially if Nancy's there for ice cream.
Yeah.
And bring a lawn chair. I mean, it's not.
Nancy has the barn.
We're not going to overcommit, but the staff's done some things behind the scenes to help even procure this better. But we're just, at this point, we're comfortable with that number for now. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, again, Mark Pottinger, 44 Texaco Road. I just lived in the township all my life, and I really appreciate what's been done in preserving the land. And I would like to offer that if it would settle things, I would like to offer to pay for it myself. So that's up to the.
That's very kind.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Mark, I miss the 60s when it was all farm and the roads. You didn't have tractor trailers.
Me too.
Sir, come on up.
I was going to say, I still don't have a problem if it comes.
I don't have a problem with that either.
Go ahead.
Tom Martin.
Only if you're offering to chip in. I took your thunder. Sorry about that. I think so. Is it real?
Hey, hey, thanks a lot. That, no, that.
I'm kidding. I know.
We weren't trying to shame anybody. Now you're making me feel bad.
Dave, I'm not sure we want to show in the open forum we're collecting cash.
You might want to bring more money because it.
I am a solicitor. I might have to ask him some experience.
If we need police cars or something, we know who's coming with a $10,000 check the next time.
Let me get one other comment. And I'm not trying to be a smart aleck or anything like that. But you mentioned the event with the music at the mill or whatever, and that's free, right? But the people that play the music and so forth don't perform for free, right?
You're right.
How much are we paying them?
Yeah, there's a cost. I don't know the number, but.
So just saying, that's all.
Yeah, we weren't saying anybody had to do it for free. We're just saying about the funding. So we're, like, I know that there's going to be a contingent that are going to complain about, so. I'm sure you're going to give them another thing now that that was brought up to complain about. But I'm just saying, we'll have a contingent.
All right, let's see if we can get to a motion. Is there a motion on this item?
Well, we'll have to change the.
It's a not to exceed. We could probably keep it there. And then maybe less, depending on what we get in the hat, right?
Yep.
Before, before we make the motion, I'll ask, does everybody on the board want to put a set amount down that we do? Or isn't anybody tuned for that?
I'm not opposed to it. I was, I was getting ready to go the route Mark went as well, so I'm not opposed to it. Yeah.
Well, I don't think he should have to pay for it all either. But, I mean, showing appreciation to them, like, from our end, I mean, we're getting paid. They're not. So I thought.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make a donation. So, but yeah, we could still move just not to exceed, just, you know. Because if we do get more RSVPs, it may, it may actually increase that, so.
You all are making a donation, Harry? Harry even said it, you know, it's stingy.
That's fine.
Of course, I don't make as much as Dave does.
Oh, you make more.
I wish.
Okay.
So what you're saying, Carl, is we could just all make the motion not to exceed 1,300. But if we get donations from the board and from other members of the public, that would be reduced.
It could be, yeah.
Is that what you're saying? You're suggesting?
Yeah, I think that's a good way forward, yeah.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve financial support by the township for the 1,000 acre celebration of preserved land and amount not to exceed 1,300.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Dave, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Back before us is the fence lease at Paul Walters Park with some updated amounts. Tyler, did you want to give an update on that?
Yeah, just real quickly. So last month, what we had discussed was, at the time, we were going to be taking over the lease agreement from the contractor that was under contract for site work at Paul Walters Park. And the board had motion to do the lease agreement at a cost not to exceed that $5,000 a month cost. And getting the lease agreement finalized with the company, they actually came back and said, hey, we don't want to treat you as a contractor. We want to treat you as what you are, and therefore, here's a new rate. It's going to be 12 months for a lump sum of $37,224, which also includes them coming up and realigning the fence slightly to open back up the playground area. So that's what you have before you tonight is the lease agreement, 12-month lease for a lump sum of $37,224.
Okay, thanks, Tyler.
Any questions?
Comments, questions?
Did you ask him to chip in on the land preservation?
I did not.
We'll hit up enough people here.
So we're looking for a motion.
Any discussion? If not, look for a motion.
Um, there's a.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Comment coming in.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
All right, again, Mark Pottinger, 44 Texaco Road. I don't know if I have the figures here exact, but definitely it's a better price than what it was. Still, to lease the fence for a year, you're going to pay $37,000. To buy it, it's $35,000. So it costs $2,000 more to lease it than to buy it. As a businessman, for 27 years, I would never make that decision. I would never lease something at a higher cost than what I could purchase it for. I know there was concern at the end of the project, what do we do with the fence? We have no storage for it. We have no place to put it. What if we can't sell it? I did some checking, the weight of the fence. We found out how much the fence weighs. And if you look at the going rate to scrap it, you can get $8,000 for the fence, just by putting it in a container. So you're buying it for $2,000 less than you can rent it for. You're also saving another $8,000 at the end. That's the worst-case scenario that you can't sell it to maybe another township that needs one. Or even using it for the property on Woods Drive that the township owns. That could easily be put as a security fence around that property so that if and when construction would ever start, you would also have security there. Like I said, I'm just not a fan, as like I said, of a business owner. You just don't rent stuff for more than what you can buy for. So that's my thought on that. You can save, like I said, you'll save the taxpayers $10,000 by doing it this way. If you can sell the fence, you could possibly save them $20,000. So, I mean, to me, it's a sizable amount of money. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Liability-wise, if there is something that happens that we call them, compared to if we own it, once we make the call, they don't come out, somebody gets in, something happens, that protects us. We're looking at it as an insurance policy.
I understand liability. Liability, basically, if somebody's going to sue you, it's because of negligence. And I don't see having the fence, having it there and having it erected, and you owning it is going to, is a negligence type of thing.
If something happens to the fence where it comes down, and we call them, they don't come out.
Then you're not negligent. You made an effort to get it repaired.
Exactly. But if we own it, we own it. Say it happens over the weekend, or we let it go overnight, something happens, and it's on us.
But you're not negligent. You're still in the process of taking care of it. You have a solicitor here that could answer it better than me. But they're going to sue you for negligence, and as long as you're making an effort to put the fence up, you're not really liable. And why would a fence, why would it even be a fence company? I would never be in the fence business if I was afraid someone was going to sue me because my fence was down.
Paying that in that price is for them to maintain it and keep it in protective order. Compared, it's not in the ground. It is above-grade fence.
Those posts are in the ground.
Yeah.
It's not permanently erected. They're in the ground.
They're not permanently, but they are.
Driven down into the ground.
Wind, with dirt, getting wet, anything can happen. I look at it as, we're keeping the township, and if something happens.
The fence is a chain-linked fence. It has very little wind surface. So for it to come down, someone would have to basically be climbing over it, tearing it down. And again, the township, I'm sure, has liability insurance. That's why you have it. Otherwise, why own any of your vehicles? Why own any of your construction vehicles? Why own anything? Why not lease it? That way, if that's what you're saying.
What you're saying is true. Why would we need to put a fence up? If we have liability insurance, somebody gets hurt, we'll turn it over to a carrier.
For what it's worth, I think we pay 30 for liability insurance, roughly. Is that minor?
About $29.9, yeah, 30, $3,000.
I'm just making a comment as a business owner. Like I said, I've been in business for 27 years. I would never, I would never do that. It just wouldn't be a good business decision, and it's just not a way, it's not smart business. So again, it's my opinion. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer. But I think definitely if you can save the residents $10,000 to $20,000, I think you should consider it.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that.
Tyler, how many feet was that?
6,700.
It's over a mile of fence.
And a one pole every 10, 12 feet.
I don't think you're going to get $8,000 scrap metal went down in price.
Tyler, do you think we could sell it?
You can always, yeah. You can always put it on Minnesota bid, once we're done with it. That's, if you want to buy it, that's what I would suggest afterwards, once we're done with it, Minnesota bid it off. Or do the scrap option if you think there would be more value in scrapping it versus selling it.
What was the purchase price?
The purchase price was just shy of 35K. I think it was 34,400 something.
I'd be in favor of. Something like that.
I'm sorry. Nancy, what'd you say?
I said I would be in favor of purchasing the fence.
We don't need it for the next phase out there, right?
We would want it through the next phase of Paul Walters, through next summer.
Yeah, so one year from now, and then it should be done, done, right?
The bulk of the park will be done. There will still be a need for a third or fourth phase, which we're working through that with HRG right now to bring back to the board. We're working through funding, and what we have, and what the costs are coming in at. We have, tentatively, right now with HRG, we're working on compiling all that to bring to. We have tentatively right now with HRG, we're working on compiling all that to bring to the board in July.
Last meeting, we were told that the next phase was it.
The, the last meeting, what I, I'm sorry, what I, what I was conveying was the next phase, phase two, we will need fencing through that, right?
We, we were made to believe that was it though. I thought that that was going to do the basic site work.
Yep.
Or, and then it was just doing the amenities in the fields.
It, so.
The infill.
Yeah. So Dave, it's, what we're finding is the cost for some of those amenities are not going to make the funding that we secured. But a good portion of it is, will be, will be funded in phase two.
The bulk of the park will be done.
So in all reality, after next year, we won't need the fence.
Correct.
What, what about Woods? The Wood.
Minnesota campus.
Or Stony Ridge, anything there?
I, I think that's an unknown at this point of if we need it at Woods, you know, definitely once we start to develop Stony Ridge out the rest of the way, fencing will be needed in some capacity. Um, but it, I, there's no schedule or timeline on those to give an accurate.
Know too of the actual, it may not be done in twelve months. We don't know where that's going to end up. We may have to extend that fifteen, eighteen. I'm starting, I'm leaning towards buying and we can sell it or scrap it. So I'd rather have control of it. I can tell you, we're not going to be done in twelve months. We, I think we all know about these projects.
No, probably it, it'll be, it'll, phase two will be fall of twenty-six and then we'll be looking at completing phase three in twenty-seven.
Could be a two-year lease, right? Now we're, we're, we're going to regret it.
But, but the thing, yeah, you're looking, if you even have this for a year or fourteen months, and even if it's two thousand dollars difference, what you're looking at is shared liability in the event something happens.
Sean, could you, I mean, bring you into the debate, but can you help us on the liability? Is that, is that transfer?
Um, so, yeah, I mean, it, it, the, the, the benefit of having, having it under the lease is you have somebody else to point the finger at. Um, so you have another, another pocket.
But they're going to come after both of us, right?
Absolutely. Sure.
Yeah. But see, the problem is like, if you call them, notify them, the fence is down or there's an issue and, and there's nothing done, then it puts majority of it on them.
In, in, in either, in either case, what you would need to have is you need to have somebody on a regular basis going out and, and checking it. Because you, if you don't have that in place, then you could, you could be viewed as being negligent because you're, you're ignoring it. Um, and then if anything's brought to your attention, you need to move as quickly as you reasonably can. Um, mobilize somebody to, to repair the fence or replace the fence. And that goes in either case, right? The other notifying the, the, uh, the, the, the company, I forget the name of the company.
Long Fence.
Yeah, Long Fence. Simple enough, right?
Pretty long fence.
Or, or, or taking care of it yourself if you own, if you own the fence.
Thanks, Sean.
So, and I don't know, I mean, I, the useful life of the fence is probably fifteen, twenty years for, for a chain link fence, fence like that, I would think. So to the extent that's a factor, it's, it's going to be around for a while.
Couple times and the fence gets stretched, it's.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of purchasing myself.
Okay. See if we can get to a motion. Anybody willing to make one?
I will.
Tyler, assuming that offer still stands, I know you've been focused on lease.
Uh, the, the, the companies preferred would be to just sell it to us, but, um, they were willing to put together a lease agreement with us.
Maybe you can negotiate the sales price as, as you did the lease price.
I can see what I can do. I'm not sure what that does for the motion tonight if you're changing, looking to change a motion though.
You, uh, and I, I'm sorry, I've, I lost track in the conversation. Was there a motion in a second?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so you, you'd need to vote to amend the motion that's on the agenda first, and then you'd vote on the, on the, on that motion.
I will make a motion to amend the existing, uh, uh, motion. And with the idea that we would purchase the chain link fence at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand, would that?
That would cover the amount, yes.
Yeah.
I can pull up the exact number if you'd like.
That's okay. As long as it covers it, Tyler?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion then for Nancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Or a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, defending?
I oppose.
Harry? In favor? Okay, sorry. Motion carries four to one. All right, thank you.
Carl, i- if I, if I could just, uh, back to Dave's point on just the timeline here for Paul Walters, I just want to make sure it's clear. Um, the township receives, uh, one million six hundred fifty thousand in grants for the next phase of Paul Walters. Um, as we are working with HRG and working through the amenities and cost structure and, and getting pricing on stuff, there is certain aspects of that plan that is exceeding those grants that we've brought in, right, that we've secured. So we intend to have all those numbers with HRG ready to go for the July meeting. We've already talked to HRG about it. We're already close. So at the July meeting, we'll be bringing that update to you to let you know that this is what we can cover with the grants we secured. And this is what needs to be moved to a third phase and that we need to go after additional grant money through DCNR and whatnot again, uh, to get a third phase.
But it's phase two, is that's earthwork still?
Yes, there's going to be some final grading for the trails, the courts, the pavilions, the parking lot, you know, that'll, that'll all be fine tuned.
But the, the, the site itself's been graded.
Correct.
The whole site.
Yes, yes. But phase two, that, the, the stone that we created there, that's all going to be used. There'll be some extra. I understand there'll be some extra that we can haul away and use for our own inventory throughout the township, but, or over at Woods Drive, uh, facility, but that'll all be, it'll be an open park with amenities there to use. But there is some aspects that we're working through that are going to have to be moved to a third phase.
If, if we have the site graded, okay, and we're just putting in like, say trails and courts.
Courts, pavilions.
What do we, yeah, what do we need the construction fence for?
They're, they're still going to be grading equipment and whatnot around for when we also do the Joe Ricky trail. There's also that mound of substantial amount of two A stone that we talked about last month that we, we want to protect the site to make sure that people aren't in there playing in those areas.
It'll be an active construction site.
Understand, but like, in general, when they, we've done any other construction in the parks like that, now I, I understood when we did the other phase, then what do we need the fence for, for?
I mean, it's a great question. It's something that the board brought to us with the, the fence when we first kicked this all off, that we wanted to fence up to protect the site. We didn't want people walking through it. We didn't want people having the chance to drive through the new site. So like.
Yeah, and I.
Soon as that chain comes down, fence comes down, I want everybody in this room to hear, Dave, everybody is going to walk that park. I just, I, and I know what you're, I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying, but I want us all to understand when we remove that fence, there, it is open field and they're going to jump on there.
The grass is growing, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. But you've got mounds of the rock. You're going to have equipment in there working this fall. You're, it's going to have, be an active construction site.
Understand, we, we seeded in-house thirty acres at Stony original, we did the first phase.
Yep.
We did that, we did not put fence up around it. I, I thought the next phase, we, it was more earthwork where there would cut fill.
There, there is going to be that.
There, yeah, there, 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 there is going to be that though, Dave. I think that's what we're saying. And it won't be as extensive as this last phase.
Yeah.
This phase one.
If you're the excavator and you're putting utilities or whatever in, you either fence around what you don't have backfilled for that day with construction fence, safety fence. I, I was under the understanding that we were doing more. If this is that, I don't know we're necessarily after the, the grass is up now, growing. I haven't been back. If there's a standard grass, what do we have other than possibly the two A pile? But if you have that piled correctly, you can make your tapers on that, that it's not dangerous. What, for a mile of fence, we could save thirty-five thousand or thirty thousand if we just do the, the fence around the stone pile.
Yeah, I mean, I, I. Tyler did a great job articulating the meeting we had this discussion, and that is when you take that fence down, that is an open field. And I'm, I just want the board to remember there's Walden of five hundred fifty on one side and Rivendell on the other, and four other developments within a couple hundred yards. That park, everybody wants to get in there, including ourselves. It, we all should just be aware, when that fence comes down, there will be children running around. There will be, uh, it'll be an active park again.
But, but it's graded and seeded, right?
But we're going to be putting, uh, courts in, we're going to be putting a trail in.
Understand that, but I mean, right now it's, it's open and graded and seeded and.
It's, it's been, it's been seeded. That is correct. And some of that started to germinate.
We have to mow it anyhow, so we're going to run equipment on it. If people walk on that and that grass, it's semi-established now. It's, it was planted in spring, right?
It was, uh, it was planted at the, towards the end of May, mid-May. It, it is growing, Dave. And, and again, I just want to make sure the whole reason we decided to bring, keeping the fence in place was because the board directed the desire to keep the fence in place.
Yeah, well, I was under, I haven't been up, I was under the understanding that there was things there that needed to be secured.
Yeah, there's rough in, in, um, Aaron or JJ, please jump in. The rough grading is done. We're still going to have to do trench work for utilities. We're still going to have to do trail. We're going to have to dig out trails and put the basin for trails and top the trails. There's still the basin work, the final basin will have to be done because right now it's just in the temporary state of, uh, sediment basin, right? Um, so there's still a lot of activity that's going to be taking place on that.
I agree on the basin, especially, I, I haven't looked at it. If it holds water, you still should have a fence around, you could fence that. But like, when they do, and you know this, Aaron, when they do the trench work, they're required, that's how you show, you have to have.
You have to backfill it by the end of the day.
Build it or have safety fence around it, construction fence. That's on them. That's, that'll be part of the contract regardless. But as far as doing the whole site, I don't know where we have to do the whole site. Cause it's been, you're talking a month and a half, the grass should be.
We're planning to start mowing next week, if not directly after July fourth, we're going to start mowing inside. Not consistently like we do the other parks, but we're going to start mowing.
Yeah.
Just, we found ourselves back at square one?
Well, I, but, I mean, I, I just, we, we, we may or may not be at square one. I think that's why Tyler had brought this to the board. And at that point, we felt the security in this phase two is the, the most important thing. Because when that fence comes down, I'm going to scream it out loud, that is a field and everybody's going to go to the field. And if we get to a point where we decide construction starts in September, there's going to be a lot of people walking that park and we just have to understand that.
It's, it's so different if we're out mowing the park and people are using it or we're digging it ourselves. They, they have to take measures as a contractor.
We also have a pretty good sized pile of rock over there, Dave.
I understand. And I said the retention pond and without looking at the pile, if the tapers on the pile are all right, we can put fence just around that. We don't have to do a mile of fence around it. That's why I'm saying we can curb our cost on that. I thought that we were at a different stage of that.
I, I mean, there's still, it's still going to be a busy construction site. Stuff's going to be happening in there.
What's going on between now and September back there? Just mowing and?
Just mowing.
Yeah, it was, uh, just to be honest, I was, I missed the last meeting, but I was surprised we were keeping it closed knowing that we not, we may not be constructing until spring, right? So.
They're putting what? Trails in, which they'll either.
Trails, courts.
They'll either mill with a milling machine out or they'll use an excavator to dig. You're only going down about a foot. They're, they're going. I, I don't see where we need.
I'm going to ask people who know grass, but I mean, I, I, if we get a couple hundred people a day walking on that new grass, is that going to do us the right thing?
It isn't going to hurt it.
I'm just asking.
Running the mowers and the tractors on it, that does.
It, it's, it's temporary rye grass seed anyway, right now.
It's not permanently seeded.
No, because we're, we're going to have to go back in. There's meadow spaces that we're going to be planting with, uh, meadow grasses and everything.
I thought you guys said it was final graded though.
It, it's rough graded. There's still going to need to be some final grading done around the courts, around the trails. Like there's.
But where they don't put the courts, the trails in, that's our permanent grading for the park. So it's.
Essentially, yes, yes.
It's final graded.
Yeah.
The only place it won't be is when they have to dress up around court.
Correct, correct. But there, there's areas that were just put down with rye seed that in the next contract will be meadow grass seeding that will need to be planted.
How, how much is it?
Uh, a good bit. Yeah, there's a whole quadrant of the park that's going to be meadow grasses.
That, that can be fenced if we have to later, but if you seed it, it's got annual rye, you're covered for the season.
Yeah, it, I, I mean, a- again, this, this, this conversation all started because there was a desire from the board to keep the fence in place. And if that's not the desire anymore, then give us that direction.
Yeah, I, I had a different idea. I thought we were at a different stage in what it is until, if it's final graded and that grass is coming up, I really don't know what we're protecting people from. Even if the contractor goes in to do the work, that area can be isolated. And I do agree, if the pond's holding water or there's steep embankments here, we require developers to put fence up. We can put a fence up around that. I haven't been back to look at it either temporary until we have it.
Yeah, if you're looking to just fence off the basin area and the stockpile, we can look into that. I would strongly request that we don't just do the snow fencing though.
Oh, no, 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 no. If we're going to do that, we'll do something like this, but we, to do six thousand feet of fence, that's, that's over a mile. If we can knock it down, and then I think it makes it better for you guys having to mow and maintain, not having the fencing there.
You just want to buy half the fence.
I don't even think you need to do that without.
Tyler, you want to, you want to come back with maybe a smaller amount?
So, and, yeah. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you want to understand what it costs to just do the basin and the stockpile of stone.
How steep's the banks on, on the, the pond?
Uh, JJ, Aaron?
We normally grade them for sediment basins at, at three to one or two to one. I would imagine it's not any less steep. Okay, three to one. Um, I wouldn't imagine it's less steep than that.
And then it's not, it's not holding water, right? It's infiltrating. We don't have standing water in the bottom of it.
I haven't visited it recently since, you know, a lot of the rain has been happening. I don't know, Tyler, have you seen it?
I have not been up with the rain.
Yeah.
Worst case scenario, can you maybe measure around what the pond is and, uh, stockpile?
Wha- what?
Could you just run out there at six o'clock tomorrow?
No, you, you measure on the po- the pond and do what?
Around the pond, like what we would need fence wise for that and the stockpile.
Sure.
I thought we were at a different state, but if it's final seeded, I really don't know what we're protecting.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so I can look into that. The, um, timeline wise though, uh, Kinsley contract is officially closed out as of tonight's approval. Uh, the intent was for us to take over following this meeting in some capacity.
I was thinking about that, Tyler, and th- this would be my suggestion for everyone. Maybe you make it, um, a cost not to exceed, that way Tyler can act on it. Just say, we want X, Y, Z cost not to exceed this. That way Tyler can just act on it tomorrow or whatever is needed.
Well, we already.
You already did, you already have them, yeah, an approved motion to buy it. You can modify that motion and then you could just, Tyler has the independence then. If it's only a thousand feet, he can authorize a thousand feet tomorrow. Yeah, or worst case, we can just lease it for a month, Tyler, give you some time to figure that out.
How many tons did we estimate a two A stone or what?
Yeah.
Ten thousand tons?
It's a lot of stone.
That should give us enough when we do the complex between what we have over there and what we got there, that we don't have to buy two A stones.
Lot of savings, yeah.
Yes, we'll save a lot of money on that.
We need to protect that pile.
It's put free. I thought maybe you're going to sell it ten dollars a ton and.
There you go. Okay. So I'm going to defer over to Sean and see how we can work this out then tonight.
It's a really good question.
Use your backyard, Sean, how steep?
Not quite that big, we don't have too many backyards that are big enough for that in, in Carlisle. Um, I think, I think where we are is that we're leaving Tyler some discretion to determine. The length of fence that's necessary to protect what has been discussed, okay? And are we, are we purchasing the fence?
I'd like to see what, uh.
Is it thirty feet or twenty eight? I don't, I don't care, I really don't feel strongly about this, guys, I.
No, but that adds up to a lot of money if we don't have to change.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't, I agree, I'm just. Yeah, it, um, sorry, Sean, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I, I just wanna walk us through step by step with answers before I move on. So I think that's, that's right, because to, 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 uh, inform the motion, we're going, going to need to identify that. Unless we, well, you don't wanna leave that discretion, so I think we need to determine are we purchasing the fence or not. Assuming, it seems like the lease, a one-year lease is roughly equivalent to the purchase per unit. Right, so it's, it's the, you're probably in the same, probably going to wind up the same.
Regardless of how much speed, it's probably close to the same.
Right, exactly, yeah, so, and the unit, was it five dollars and fifty cents, I think the unit, unit price, Tyler? Um, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to work myself there.
So it's, it, you're saying. To re- reduce it to those areas, the question is, are we buying and releasing it?
Right.
That needs answered.
Mm-hmm.
If it's.
And then I, and then it's just an approval at a unit price.
Yeah.
Based on the, the, the linear footage that you, that you identify as necessary.
These people even want, don't they wanna just sell it as is, as opposed to like, we'd like twenty-five percent of the fence or?
I'm not, I'm not gonna circle back to that point, Nancy.
They just, they reuse it, they just keep reusing it over and over.
We, alright, I would suggest we buy whatever amount is determined, Tyler, to protect the things we need to protect. That would be m- my suggestion.
Agree.
But then, if we can get covered on, on your motion.
If, yeah, if that's what you're doing, then the amended motion will cover that. Because not to exceed that amount, Tyler knows not to get anywhere near that amount.
Yeah, okay.
Or else Tyler's, Tyler's gonna start looking elsewhere.
So the motion is good, so the motion is good, I'll go to the company and I'll say, you're gonna. Realign the fence to protect these things, take the rest with you, and then sell me the rest of the, the fence that you're keeping on the property. Is that what I'm hearing?
Bill asks for what's meaning, yeah.
Did you see the pile of stone, is it, how steep are the?
I haven't seen it since it's finished, I thought in progress.
It's steep. It is steep, Dave.
And never mind, yeah, I thought if it was.
It wa- it was definitely, I'd say, two to one, one to one.
Yeah, if it was three or four to one, then that'd be different.
Yeah, it's pretty steep, alright.
And I, I, I don't mean to be pedantic on this, but sorry, um, the, the, the revision of Sunshine, uh, several years ago. Because this, the motion that you amended to, um, or I had you amend to, I'm not sure if it was made as a motion to amend, but it, it was. Um, you then need to vote on that, so you needed to amend the agenda as it is, which, which, um, Supervisor Griffey's motion. Uh, did, and then you need to vote on that, on that motion.
Okay, so Nancy's motion was to amend?
Um, it was to a- amend the motion to, to purchase the, the fence in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
So can we leave Nancy's motion to be, to allow, authorize Tyler to see. The price compared to lease, purchase with it, the amended amount. And let him make, if it's financially prudent to do one or the other, allow him.
So you want a, you, you want to amend the motion again? Um, to, yeah, we'll need to do that, i- and it would be a motion to, uh, authorize.
Staff.
Staff to, uh, to lease or purchase. The necessary fence in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, and whichever option is lesser. Is that where we are?
Right.
Okay. There's, there's your motion, you just say, I moved to amend.
Well, that, are you pulling your hair out, or?
There's a, there's a recording.
We're, we're introducing a lease option now, I, I, I don't wanna do that.
That we are buying.
Whatever's the best, with it being less amount, it, it's same, then he has the authorization to purchase it. It's just to make sure for the less amount.
My problem with leasing is we don't know the timeline, this could be two years, it could be three years.
Either purchase, but we're letting it open if, then it doesn't create another issue if it is.
This, this is why I asked that question, Charlie.
Yeah.
We, we made a decision to purchase, I think we should stick with that decision to purchase, I understand reducing the amount of fence needed. I understand that point, but we made a decision to purchase, I think we should stick with that.
It is a purchase or lease, if he finds it, it leaves it open to him. To cover us, that we're not coming back to the next meeting, it's probably gonna be the purchase, but it's to give him latitude if it is. It's not saying it has to be leased.
Tyler's on vacation, by the way, for the next week.
So tomorrow.
So he is looking somewhere else.
So I'll make you a deal, Dave, I have a car appointment tomorrow morning, and while I'm waiting to get my car done, I'll get this taken care of for you.
I know you will, I have faith. Pick Dave up, he'll come out with you.
You wanna cover the car bill?
Can't, no, I can't.
Just kidding.
He leases.
So, so does, does the mo- does the motion as amended earlier stand to purchase?
Yes.
Okay, so, so now you just need to vote, to vote on that, that motion.
Okay, is there a motion on the amended, uh, agenda item?
I make a motion to purchase it in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars with the changes in the amount that we need. Does that work?
That's, that's good, as discussed tonight, yes.
Okay, the motion, is there a second?
Am I, am I doing this again?
Yeah, just a second, just say a second, yes. What we moved on for you was to amend the agenda, now we're voting on said amended agenda. So Laura, your motion is good, now Laura is moving to approve your amended agenda, she made a motion, we need a second.
Uh, second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, okay, that motion carries.
I'll, I'll just wait, we'll let his, uh, email ask me.
Mr. Moyer, engineering update?
Yeah, uh, so Hidden Creek went out to bid the pickleball court, so that's good news. Um, we might, uh, depending on the timing of everything, have a recommendation for you at the next board meeting, just wanted you to be prepared for that. Dave, I know we talked about the cost of HRG's contract, because we are conservative on the design of ADA items. We did come in under budget on ADA design, so that was good news. The soccer team, um, uh, needed a kickback wall out there due to some of the geometric constraints. So we took that extra money, we did a structural design of a reinforced concrete kickball wall. And so that'll be now, that is in fact, part of the project, so I wanted to make sure you guys knew you got your, your money's worth out of that. Um, and that's it for me.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yep.
Okay, expense, expense approvals, this might be.
Yeah, me, so you saw the memo there, um, uh, PA SHPO is requiring us to do a phase two testing. Um, which is more in-depth, and it's gonna be a requirement, we have to do this, um, to get our MPDS permit, uh, approved. On the MPDS permit, I'd like to share with the board that it has already been submitted from Cumberland County on a technical review. They have moved it over to DEP, which is much faster than it has been, and we're hoping to hear from them, I'll just use the word soon. So this is a requirement for us at the municipal campus.
What, what was found, that, sorry, Dave, to trigger the?
Um, pieces of pottery and some pieces of foundation, I believe it's called the Loudon Farm.
Sheriff.
They use the word la-.
Loudon was the.
That was the one they used.
Eighteen hundreds.
Yeah, the sheriff, it was the sheriff farm and it happens bought it.
Yeah.
The sheriff's.
So those are the, I have pictures of them, they're just, they're about yay bigs, Carl, I mean, they're not, you know, big. They're just, they're chunks of things, so.
I thought that we.
We did, Dave, we did the narrative on the, we did the narrative on the submission, and based upon, um. Uh, well, I'll just say, the first, uh, first organizations, conversations. Um, the narrative, while it had some good support, was not enough for us to just move it, so. Um, this is unfortunately part of the State Department's stuff that they require us to do.
But the, the sheriff farmhouse, that was not out by, where the compost facility, so.
It's, it's for, it's the MPDS permit for the entire site, unfortunately, yeah.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, you're right, it's, yeah, this is down, actually gonna be where the stormwater basins are.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Can I look for a motion on the supplement?
Thanks.
Moved to approve.
Dave moved, is there a second?
Second.
Harry, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries, we'll close out with supervisor and staff comments, Scott? Okay, well, that.
New website coming, and I just wanted to let everyone know. That if you've currently signed up for the notifications of meetings and agendas and, and such. On the current website, you will need to re-sign up on the new website. For security reasons, and it's two different hosts, they cannot transfer your information over to the new website. The new website goes live on July twenty-first, it actually doesn't go live at midnight like we all thought it would, it goes live at nine AM. So sometime after nine AM on the twenty-first, try to go in there, and site's real easy, there's a bot, it says something about stay informed. Or sign up for notices, click that, then you choose your options like before, it'll send you an email, and you have to confirm that you actually did do this. And then you're good to go. And we'll start announcing that all over the place soon.
Cool, thanks, Wylde. Amy? Glenn? Tyler?
Uh, just real quick, uh, Ray already mentioned it, but the chill at the mill event was absolutely fantastic. Hats off to Hope, our coordinator, our event coordinator on that, and then additionally, um, this past weekend. Uh, we hosted the fourteenth annual vets golf benefit, uh, tournament. Um, at the Carlisle Barracks Golf Course to support our veterans committee and the initiatives that they have going on. Uh, it was a hot day, but it was a fantastic day, um, thank you to those who participated in it, who's in the crowd. Thank you to the volunteers for the day to make it all possible, and the recreational staff that also is involved, uh, for the whole planning of that event. So hats off to everyone, uh, preliminary numbers are coming in around that ten thousand dollar mark again in raised funds. Um, after the next, uh, check cycle, we'll have a better understanding of exactly what the total amount raised was. But it should be right around that mark again, so hats off to everyone there, so thank you.
Thanks, Tyler, I think a recount is in order for that fifty-two that apparently.
Yeah, uh, when I walked up to the board and I saw that as a winner too, I was like, mm, that's crazy.
Well, it, four, a four-man team anyway, yeah, right.
That's two eagles on the course at some point in time.
That's how they raised the ten grand, was all those mulligans they bought, they bought eight hundred mulligans.
I don't know, I don't know, Cheryl? Uh, Lieutenant, Chief?
Uh, numerous things, I'd like to go over the composition of fencing and how to maintain.
Chief?
For Supervisor Lanker, when I stepped out, I went up and I looked up those numbers for you. Um, for the four agencies or the tow companies, and I think you know how the list goes alphabetically. In that time since May third, nine, nine, eight, and then five. So one company got five in that time compared to eight, nine, and nine, but again, that's only over a seven-week period, so.
Individual vehicle, not just wrecks.
Nope, individual vehicle, so I, I think by the end, it's all gonna keep balancing, and I'll give you updates as we go down the road. Maybe every quarter, so I can provide you with updates, um. Yesterday, uh, along with Calvary Chapel, um, out on North Locust Point. We held a active assailant exercise, it was a full-scale exercise. Uh, eighteen police officers from six different agencies, including twelve of our own officers. Uh, participated, thirty-two others, EMS, fire department, fire police, county individuals. Uh, North Middleton Fire Company had their drone program out, and we used it as if it was real, we went through county. Uh, they set up side channels for us, dispatched as if it was really happening, people responded the way they would, just not lights and siren. We had let the neighborhood know what was going on, we had also posted it, um, so fifty folks, uh, the church had eleven. Um, volunteers to help us in role-playing roles, uh, I roped my daughter into coming out and doing it as well. Um, and it was very productive, there were mistakes made, which is what we want them to happen there, and not when it counts. Um, county got to test some of their new dispatchers, as well as their nine-one-one texting that they use. You can text nine-one-one and send things, so we did different scenarios, and one of them was a student hiding in a classroom with a, with a gunman. And they were texting nine-one-one, so they got to get that out. Um, the biggest issues that we had were communications, because the current radio system is dreadful, especially inside buildings. Uh, and that is across the board, fire, EMS, and police, a- and that should hopefully be corrected when we go to the P twenty-five system. Come September, October, November of this year, so the hope is, we get to there and that it, it does what they promised. Cause that was a glaring issue, and there's just nothing we can do to fix it, um, unfortunately, we took steps to try to help it. Kind of almost a daisy chain of radios to make it happen. Uh, and lastly, uh, Tuesday, August fifth, just cause it's closing in from six to eight PM. Also out at Stony Ridge Park is National Night Out, and we invite everybody to come out, uh, there will be no hats. Uh, out for donations, everything is covered through our COPS cares, donations that we already received. And burgers, dogs, waters, and stuff like that, and we invite everybody to come out, so.
Great, thanks, Chief, appreciate it, Sean? Right?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Aaron? Okay, we'll close out with the board, Laura.
Um, just to, uh, clarify, yes, if you are planning to attend the celebration, we definitely want residents to come. Just please send me a quick email, we have someone who's, um, donating, donating the cake, but I wanna make sure we have enough cake. So just send me a quick email that you're coming, just so we'll have a good number for that, so, um, but yeah, we're very excited for the celebration, thanks.
Thanks, Laura, Nancy?
Good job at music, uh, uh, music at the mill, that was great, anybody who's here that didn't come, come the next time.
Great, thanks, Harry?
A little off schedule, but I wish everyone a, a happy Fourth of July and a safe one.
Thanks, Harry, Dave?
Ray, um, so I don't forget when we meet, about what we talked about at six. Um, I have a, through the Authorities Magazine, there's a, in Bethlehem, PA, there's a authority. It's for mainly water and sewer, but one of the things that they have is stormwater. I was wondering if maybe we can get a staff member, I have the itinerary, the, that maybe Jen or somebody could go up. There's some different things I think would be important to a staff member to go to them seminars.
Be, it'd be great, Dave, just, yeah, when we meet, please, if you have it, remember to bring it, thanks.
The magazine, and then also Tyler Wise, the old Ramex roller sitting down at Stony, or, uh, Didn't Creek for the last three months.
Yeah, so there, uh, there was a, a hose blew in it, and it needed to be custom-made by Groft. It took like six weeks to get in. Then they put it in, and then a belt blew, and then Groft didn't have the belt, so it took like another four, six weeks. And then the belt came in, and then something else blew, and so it's, it's, it's immobile down there right now.
Is there a problem with the pump or something?
Um, Groft is scheduled, I forget what day, but they're scheduled to come back out here to look at it, so that's.
They're not the best brand.
Uh, it's an old roller too, yeah.
I picked that up when it was new, it was like two thousand two, so it's pushing twenty, two thousand one, twenty-five.
Yeah, the, the, the only purpose that we use that for is rolling out the athletic fields once a week, year, and it kinda went out on us. So we're trying to figure out what exactly is wrong with that dang thing.
Get shipped down the road, the other thing, Monday, the company, the Authority Sewer. Vacuum, he's coming in for the heads for the storm pipes, are you, you're not here Monday?
I'm not here on Monday.
Uh, can Lonnie?
I'll talk to him about it, yeah.
Have him call me, I'll give him the rundown on, um, where we're meeting and stuff, but then that way, we can maybe get a PO. Then for what.
Yeah, I do have a message out to Dak.
Yeah, I talked to him today.
Okay.
Yeah, so he, cause I had told him that you were gonna call.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Dave, just wanna say thanks to those that attended and participated, I appreciate all of your input and discussion, and staff, as always, thank you guys.
And staff, as always, thank you guys, uh, moving us along one, one step at a time, right, so thank, thank you guys, uh. With that, any objection to adjournment, okay, meeting adjourned, good night, thanks, everyone?